Good evening. Let's call this meeting of the special meeting of the Board of Education to order. Can we please rise for the pleasure of allegiance? Thank you so much. Good evening. As you can see, we have seven board members. Unfortunately, Karen Hirsch cannot make it this evening, but we are all here live, the seven of us. We do not have a consent agenda. It looks like we are going straight into our public hearings. So with that, can I have the GHS student government reps come on down?
Good evening Chair Stowe, Dr. Jones, members of the board and meeting attendees. Last Friday was the final day for seniors before leaving for their internships and projects, and it was definitely a memorable one. As everyone walked into school that morning, they saw sticky notes covering the bandroom windows, wallpaper across the glass corridor, and toilet paper draped over the trees in the front courtyard. It was definitely the most excited I've ever seen GHS students on their way to their first block classes. It also was a sentimental day, so I would just like to say that GHS was an amazing place to attend high school. I will be forever grateful for the truly awe-inspiring, life-changing teachers that I had during my four years. GHS has some amazing people, and I just want to give them all a huge thank you for their often unappreciated, but nevertheless monumental impact. Also on that day, the Student Center was closed due to an outbreak of a few miscellaneous water balloons. Although we didn't spend our final hours in our beautiful one-acre student hub, I have since reflected on what it is, and more importantly, what it can be. Our Student Center can take on many shapes. It's a cafeteria for students to eat their pancakes before their first block class. It's a study hall where students can prepare for their tests during their open-the-block prior. It's a hangout space for students to socialize with their peers. It's the Center for GHS Special Events, from bouncy castles during lunch to academic exhibitions after school. The Student Center is truly an exceptional place, but it can be better, much better. When I was a rising freshman eager to enter the halls of Greenwich High School, my older sister told me about the social structure of the Student Center, where I could sit and where I couldn't. There were four sections, one for each grade, but it was more divided than just that. Certain areas were designated for certain friend groups, often along socioeconomic lines. The exciting one-acre space of activity no longer seemed that big, but we can change this seclusion and disintegration through investing in our Student Center with SRR3 funds. The Student Center can become an inclusive and equitable space for each and every one of our nearly 3,000 GHS students. Introverted quiet students can find solace in more private carols, and new friends can be made in more collaborative spaces. Greenwich High School is an incredibly diverse school, but for too long, students have remained in the same circles and not expanded their networks. With a reimagined Student Center, students can finally break down barriers and enter a more inclusive school community, which is only possible if the board invests SRR3 funds into our GHS Student Center. In the spirit of building a more diversified community, I also want to offer my reflections on homeroom at GHS. This state requirement has not yet lived up to its mission. Homeroom is meant to be a community where students can connect outside of the traditional classroom environment. But in reality, most homerooms are not very engaging, and many students feel their time could often be better spent elsewhere, for those who even attend. Our homeroom program needs a serious overhaul, where students can participate in community-building activities and are given the liberty to form organic connections with their peers. I support the administration's establishment of a homeroom committee next year that will plan the homeroom agendas with student input to ensure that both the necessary information is disseminated while also fostering community. As always, thank you for this opportunity and for your time here tonight. I look forward to speaking with you all in a month's time when Kwame and I introduce and pass the torch along to next year's student government leaders.
Thank you so much.
Good evening Chair Stowe, Dr. Jones, members of the board and meeting attendees. It is with a bittersweet heart that I give tonight's remarks. These are my last remarks as the outgoing student body president of Greenwich High School. I would just like to take the time tonight to thank everyone who made this amazing year possible. From the board, Dr. Jones, Ms. Stowe, Mr. Bernstein, and from our school, Mr. Silkman, Mr. Mayo, Ms. Tulata, Mrs. Foster, and so many more who believe in student government to bring change and advocate for our community. Looking back on our year, we started with masks, strict COVID regulation, and those awful Plexiglas dividers. If I were to go back in time and tell myself that we would end the school year with mega tables in the Student Center, a reopened Cardinal Cafe, and the last day for seniors consisting of a water balloon fight and a tailgate, my past self would tell me I'm full of it. Nonetheless, we stand here today having accomplished all of these feats and more for the betterment of the GHS culture and community, and it was all thanks to your ongoing support and feedback. This one day, the GHS Student Government hosted its first-ever moderated student body presidential debate in advance of our student government elections on May 26. The three candidates all had the courage to put themselves out in front of the entire school and communicate their vision for a GHS led by their advocacy. Here, they demonstrated their leadership abilities, shared their ideas, and connected with peers throughout our community. The candidates were professional, honest, and school-appropriate throughout the virtual debate. Personally, this debate was extremely uplifting as it showed me that my class is leaving a GHS that is better than we found it. No matter who ends up becoming student body president and vice president, I am confident that they will diligently advocate for their peers, lead initiatives that are relevant, and gain support from our town for priorities such as improving and reimagining a Student Center that is the heart and soul of our GHS school community. The Student Center is the biggest room in the high school, yet has seemingly changed the least. I believe that innovation for the betterment of our school community is imperative. We have seen this with the PAC, with the bleachers, COVID mitigation, and now it is time to see it with renovations in the Student Center. Last year, I was on a committee with numerous faculty and students who all agreed that the Student Center needed to be reimagined. From signage to interior design to technological advancement, there is immense support for a redesigned central hub for our school community. I implore the board to use SRR funds to improve our Student Center. Thank you as always for your time tonight. Can't wait to see you all next week.
It has been a true pleasure to have the two of you come speak to us at every meeting, and I'm sorry it's coming to an end, but you've always been so thoughtful, kind, great feedback, and just, you're right, we've come very far. So thank you so much both for coming, always. With that, we go to Lil. Is she here? Yes. No, GEA. Do you want to put her first? You can.
All right. Good evening, Dr. Jones, Board of Education, community members, and all the GPS staff and students, and to my GEA members. In reviewing the presentation documents on the SRR funding, I noticed the transitioning of four specific phases: survival, facilities, thrive, and transformation. Transformation: 20% of learning loss, focus on learning acceleration, academic renewal, and student enrichment. I like to focus on that word, transformation. I like to speak in support of our Student Center at GHS, a place where 2,800 students and 290 staff members can have a facility reimagined, a place of social gathering, accelerated learning, and for nourishment, not only for the physical well-being, but for our social and mental well-being. A student union, and I specifically use that word "union", where we can improve our school culture and create an environment of inclusion and not isolation, a place flooded with academic and technical and friendly resources to support student learning, a paid staff to support students well after the school day, and a union of access to not only inside, but open-air spaces. Priorities reflect to collective call to action and to think boldly, and I'm asking everyone to think boldly on what we can create and reimagine in this community, in this town, not only for the Student Center, to spark innovation, information, including regarding implementation of initiatives and resources. But let's not stop here, as they say up at the big house, and I mean GHS, that big house. Let's not stop here. Go big or go home. Let's go big. Let's not stop just with the Student Center. I hope to have the Western Fields open as quickly as we can, for Central to be built swiftly, to have the best athletic facilities that we can, to attract and retain the best teachers in Connecticut. One of the lines in the statement on the slides on transformation section says to improve the student well-being and staff. Now, I can see line items, lots of line items of all the things that we have done to improve the facilities, to keep things safe, to help accelerate learning, to recoup it. I'm not so sure what we've done for my teachers and their well-being. I talk with teachers seven in the morning till 10 o'clock at night, and I'm not so sure. I can list a few things. But my email, president@grenwichassociation.edu. Can you email me? And I want my email to be popping, or it's not going to pop at all, but I have trouble keeping up with what's the well-being of our teachers. We have 1,000 teachers on CT REAPs right now for jobs, 1,000 teachers. There is a teacher shortage. How do we keep our best teachers here? How do we attract them? We need to do a better job at that, and I am here to work. I work well with the Board of Ed. I work well with Dr. Jones. But I'm telling you right now, what our teachers went through, I hear it everywhere I go, from VET members to speeches. We have the best staff. We have this. We have that. But can anyone tell me what we've done for our well-being? Thank you.
Thank you, Lil. Next up is the PTEC president, and I see that she's online.
Kathleen, what name should I be looking for?
Michael says PTEC president. Can you pull her up?
There you go. All right. Go ahead, Mimi.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening, Dr. Jones, Chair Stowe, and other members of the Board of Education. I'm Mimi Duff, President of PTA Council, representing the 15 school PTAs and the families of all their members. Going through the agenda items for today, it looks like it's going to be a long night. We look forward to the further update on the Western Field situation. Our students there haven't had full access to the school fields for six years, and we all want to move forward. We also look forward to the Central Middle School update. We were very happy to see the call for public input on Central in the district notes last Friday, distributed by Dr. Jones. If you have thoughts to share, now is the time. Educational specifications are given to the building committees to help them understand the spaces which need to get built, the importance of sustainable features, auditoriums. Can you hear me okay?
No, can you restart? Actually, you just came on.
Oh, wow. Okay, you can hear me now?
But it was really amazing what you said.
I can't hear you. Okay, I'll start over. Good evening, Dr. Jones, Chair Stowe, and other members of the Board of Ed. I'm Mimi Duff, President of PTA Council, representing the 15 school PTAs and the families of all their... Oh, does it say wait? Do you want me to wait? Kathleen?
Yes, please.
Wait, right?
Yes, wait.
I'll wait for you.
Sorry, just texted her. Yeah, test. Go ahead and Mimi start.
Can you hear me? Yep. Can you hear me now, Kathy?
Stop again.
I'm gonna... Should I try to start again? Can you hear me? Hey, Lil. Should I do that? Hello? Oh. Can you hear me now, Kathy?
Hey, Mimi, this is Mike. I think that they're having some issues on their end. I can hear you perfectly. It's just a matter of them working it out on their end. So just hold tight.
Okay, I can hold tight, but another option, Ami Muth is there in person. She can read my comments probably. You let me know.
All right, I will. I'm texting with them on site now.
Okay.
Mike, can... Aaron, can you hear me?
I can hear you fine.
Test, test, test.
I hear you.
Yeah, I'm waiting for them to hear me.
Oh, sorry.
Test one, two, three. Test one, two, three. Testing one, two, three. Test one, two, three.
Do you want me to do it here?
Test one, two, three. Test one, two, three. Can I be heard in the building? Testing one, two, three. Tommy, can you hear me?
I do have to say, this is really cool how the community's coming together in here on this one.
Good evening, Dr. Jones, Chair Stowe, and other members of the Board of Education. I am Mimi Duff, President of PTA Council, representing the 15 school PTAs and the families of all of their members. Going through the agenda items for tonight, it looks like a long night. We look forward to further update on the Western Field situation. Our Western students haven't had full access to their fields for six years, and we all want to move forward. We also look forward to the Central Middle School update. We are very happy to see the call for public input on Central in the district notes last Friday, distributed by Dr. Jones. If you have thoughts to share, now is the time. That's in capital letters. The educational specifications are given to the building committee to help them understand the spaces that need to be built, the importance of sustainable features, auditorium size, gym size, and more. We also look forward to tonight's Special Ed Advisory Council update. On our side, within PTEC, we have voted in a new slate for next year in our gearing up for end-of-year celebrations and training for next year's members. We're also beginning to think about our advocacy goals for next year and how we can pass the baton within PTEC and continue to move the needle in improving our kids' educational experience. As a reminder, our main roles are centralized around coordinating PTA efforts and programs, advocating with the unified voice, facilitating communications, and interfacing with organizations such as the school system administration and town authorities. We're grateful that we have been involved in numerous textbook reviews and other committees this year and hope that we were able to add a valuable voice to those conversations. We welcome the opportunity to be part of these and other conversations within the district, and we will continue to work hard to provide valuable representative input on behalf of the parent community. In terms of thinking about next year's advocacy goals, there are a few things we've been discussing. Stay tuned as we look to close out this year and start next year on the right foot. First, we would like to better understand the protocols around school security and the district response and communication plans when there is a security event. There still appears to be a lack of consistency in the communication to various students and parents. Second, we want to explore device usage in the classroom and hopefully have a bit more consistency on the approach slash philosophy within the middle schools as there is growing concern about online task off, time-off tasks, which may be exacerbated by personal device usage. Third, we want to move toward two-parent teacher conferences per year for K through five students. Fourth, we want to continue to move toward a zero-waste policy and ensure recycling at all schools, not just in the classrooms, but importantly, in all the cafeterias as well. Fifth, we are discussing how we can make our K-5 lunchrooms more inclusive for students with allergies and exploring how other districts employ various means to ensure no child eats alone. And last, we would like to clarify and perhaps simplify some of the processes that schools struggle with in the way of paperwork, think outside vendors, insurance, field trips. For instance, we can coordinate with the district to provide recorded training on forms in the beginning of the school year. Before I close, I want to draw your attention to written comments sent to the Board of Ed by our North Street PTA presidents in opposition of an ice rink on North Street Fields. They learned about this possibility only in your time today and missed the speaker deadline. Thank you for your time and consideration, and sorry about Mimi not being here, or there, or wherever.
Thank you so much, Brian. It was nice having you back.
Test, test, test. Can you hear me?
Standing by. Okay.
Test, 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 test. Can you hear me?
We do have 23 speakers, and I think we would really like to get them all to go.
Test, test, test. Can you hear me?
I can hear you, Mike.
You can hear me. That's great.
All right, wonderful, just in time. So we're going to try to make sure we get everyone in, especially because the 23rd speaker is a student, and we don't want to make him have to wait until after we're done with our meeting. So with that, if you could try to speak as quickly as I do, we could get this done within an hour. So Karen, you are on the clock. Three minutes. We'll try to save people with the person on deck. Benjamin Marcus, you are up first. Thank you very much. With Jennifer Bensavango on deck.
Good evening Superintendent Jones, Board President Stowe, esteemed board members, colleagues, parents, and students. My name is Dr. Benjamin Marcus, and I'm the interim coordinator of English Language Arts and Social Studies K8. I'm here tonight to discuss how the SRR funds have provided teachers additional resources to support foundations, our well-regarded and successful reading program in grades K through 2. These funds enabled the district to purchase GEOs, the only set of decodable and readable texts that is a companion to the Foundation's reading program. In sum, GEOs is a resource that supports the Foundation program's curriculum in increasing fluency and decoding for students and has proven to be highly successful. As you may recall, Foundations incorporates the science of reading research in a carefully-designed program for all K2 students. It provides a multi-sensory structured systematic cumulative and explicit program with a documented research base. Skills overlap and are not taught in isolation. Foundations differentiates instruction while actively engaging students in their learning so that all students learn to read and spell. GEOs, however, is rooted in the belief that children are capable of reading to learn while learning to read. GEOs is a new collection of accessible knowledge-building books for emerging and developing readers. Each book enables students to apply decoding skills that they are learning in Foundations while learning about important ideas in science, history, and the arts. GEOs aligns with both the scope and sequence of Foundations. Now, some are probably asking, what does this term readable mean? GEOs are readable texts because with specific decoding strategies coupled with explicit instruction in vocabulary and content knowledge, they are wonderfully accessible to students with emerging reading skills. The books provide an authentic reading experience that builds content knowledge about science, history, and the arts while fostering intellectual curiosity. Each text is at least 80% decodable at a designated point in the Foundation's scope and sequence. This means that a minimum of 80% of the words contain phonetic elements and trick words that have been explicitly taught up to that specific Foundation's unit. It is recommended that each book be read by the Foundation's students after they have completed that unit. Teachers and principals throughout the district are reporting great success with GEOs as a companion to Foundations in the classroom. Later in this public comment, actually next, you will hear from proud principal Jennifer Bensavango of Old Greenwich School about the building and student successes with GEOs. Thank you.
Thank you so much. You're best. All right, next up, Jennifer Bensavango, followed by Michael Reed.
Good evening, Dr. Jones, Chairwoman Stowe, members of the board, and members of the community. My name is Jen Bensavango, and I'm the proud principal of Old Greenwich School. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I would be remiss if I didn't begin with a heartfelt thank you for your support in acquiring the funding for our architectural design funds. We look forward to establishing a building committee and beginning the much-needed design and renovation to our beautiful school. I am not here to talk about flooding. I am here to talk this evening and share my appreciation also for the current funding of the math interventionist social workers at the elementary school and the supplemental program GEOs for our K2 teachers. Throughout the 2021 school year, my brilliant Throughout the 2021 school year, my brilliant literacy specialist Sandy Zuccarello, my equally brilliant AP Caitlin Bertram, and I celebrated the results we saw from the full implementation of foundations despite the COVID impact, and we were eager to find decodable texts to complement the decoding and encoding instruction addressing the other components of a rich literacy program, of which text comprehension is vital. We found G O's to be the bridge we were longing for, and we were thrilled to hear that it would soon be purchased for all schools. Connecticut has some of the nation's best literacy researchers. If you follow the work of Marjorie Gillis at Literacy How or the team at Yale University's Haskins Lab, you'll see a model literacy curriculum begins with oral language at the core, surrounded by equal development of phonetic awareness, phonics, spelling, language syntax, vocabulary and morphology, and text comprehension with written expression. The G O's program has provided my teachers with engaging decodable texts and high interest mentor texts using words and language rules parallel to what is taught in the classroom during word study. One of my second grade teachers remarked, we're enjoying the books and the engagement is certainly great, and some of our early, more so than some of the early readers we used to use. The students love the connection to the work they're doing in foundations and are excited to see the transfer into books they're able to read independently. In observing the instruction of one of my first grade teachers, you can see the direct connection between foundations, G O's, smoker, reading, and ultimately, the impact in their writing. G O's has been the missing link necessary for a comprehensive literacy program in K two. The investment in this approach has increased in literacy skills throughout our school. As a former language arts teacher and true bibliophile, I find the greatest joy in seeing an increase of engaging books in the hands of our children. Our students love seeing them and their excitement in learning everything from poison dark frogs to cranberry crops and Para Olympics, while seeing the connection to double vowel syllables is magical. Thank you for the investment in our youngest learners. And I brought an example with me because I had a kiddo talk today about the bonus letters of L, F, S, and Z. Those are the letters that you have that you have to double the end of after a short vowel. So here's the book that he was reading, and it's the work of Leo Leoni. And you'll see throughout it, he has the words in here hiss, huff, fuss, and that followed exactly with the rule that he was working on in language arts. And it meant the world to him that he was able to explain that to me this morning and his mom. So thank you.
Thank you so much. Next up, Michael Reed, followed by Jill Flood.
Good evening, Chairwoman Stowe, Dr. Jones, members of the Board of Education, Cabinet members and guests. I'm Mike Reed, the math coordinator K through eight for the Greenwich Public Schools, and I'm very thankful for this opportunity to share the positive impact of our elementary math intervention program over the last two years. I have worked in the Greenwich Public Schools for almost two decades, and in my various roles, I've often thought about how lucky we are to have our outstanding reading specialists. They support every school, and the work they do literally changes lives. Being a math guy though, I would ask myself, how great would it be if we had math specialists in every school? A few elementary schools have had math interventions over the years, but they were funded through school specific budget lines. My dream was to see this limited math support expand to all elementary schools. That dream finally became a reality last year when we incorporated five new math interventionists into the staffing model. Fast forward to this year, through temporary federal funding, we've increased our math interventionists by an additional five teachers. We now have at least a 1.0 math interventionist in each school. A reminder, as a result of the pandemic, we can fund these roles now, but we must find a way to operationalize them into our budget on a yearly basis. Here are some of the impacts of these important roles on our district. This year, the full teacher in each building allows us to serve all grades inclusive of K to two. Last year, we were primarily focused on grades three to five due to lack of staffing. This year, we're able to support our students in need of more urgent or tier three intervention. Last year, due to staffing and building logistics, we were only able to provide partial tier three interventions. This year, interventionists are able to collaborate with administrators and general education teachers more frequently. This constant communication leads to more building awareness of what is needed to support our most vulnerable math students. This year, in class or tier one instruction, support has increased dramatically from 6% last year to 46% this year. We have many students that have not risen to the level of a pulled out intervention but still require additional support. With the increased intervention staffing, we can push into classrooms with more regularity, and as a result, students are receiving remediation before needing to be pulled out. A wise person once said, and that wise person is my grandfather, an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure. Lastly, teachers are now recommending students for screening with more regularity. This has led to earlier identification for math intervention as well as promoting a more reflective community striving to implement universally designed practices in the general education classroom. Thank you again for making early math intervention a priority. We are feeling the daily positive effects, and as an employee, former student, lifelong resident, and father of children in the Greenwich Public Schools, I hope to see us secure and build out our math intervention program in the years to come. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next up, Jill Flood, followed by Adrian Novak.
Good evening Chair Stowe, Dr. Jones, members of the Board, Cabinet members and guests. My name is Jill Flood, and I am the principal of North Street School for the last nine years. Thank you for this opportunity to share my perspective on the significant positive impact of the math interventionists and social workers. I'm speaking on behalf of North Street, but I know this impact has also been felt at all 11 elementary schools. At North Street, a historically high achieving school, we have had over 60 students serviced directly by our math interventionists this year. That means these students were not on target at the start of the school year to meet the end of year benchmarks based on the data collected. Supporting these students and providing interventions within the homeroom math class had always been the responsibility of the classroom teacher. Many years ago, the district realized that this was a monumental task when it came to teaching reading, and each of the elementary schools was provided a literacy specialist. Finally, after years of this imbalance between math and literacy, we now have the manpower in the form of our math interventionists to provide the students with the level of support they deserve. Already, the data from our winter benchmarks shows a tremendous amount of growth from the fall. Through explicit targeted instruction in a multi-sensory approach, many students have met their benchmarks and been exited from interventions. Through screenings and data review, the interventionists have also identified additional students with potential math difficulties and provided them with explicit systematic interventions as well. This early intervention provides the students direct targeted additional instruction in a smaller group setting with a narrow focus. This has helped the students get back on track rather than needing to be evaluated for possible special education services. When these students are in the general education classroom, they are now better able to keep up with the math instruction and be successful. Likewise, our social worker has been instrumental in helping our students who are dealing with stress and feelings of anxiousness or worry. These students come to school seeking an adult to speak with who will listen and provide them with calming strategies, stress relief, and positive affirmation. Our social worker also serves as a wonderful support to many of our families who are also dealing with a variety of challenges. She is truly helping create relationships and encouraging our parents to be our partners. Our new social worker not only provides support to these individual students and families, she has also been a huge help to our entire school community. As a member of our Safe School Climate Committee, she is available to help in times of crisis as well as planning for proactive change. This year, she started our North Street School Ambassadors Program. This is a way for our older students to channel all of their energy and enthusiasm into a wonderful leadership opportunity. Those ambassadors take pride in their jobs and act as role models while providing additional safety, positivity, and support to our entire school community. It is a truly wonderful addition to our school. We hope you will continue to support these vitally important positions in our elementary school budgets moving forward. Thank you and have a great evening.
Thank you. Next up, Adrian Novak, followed by Jackie Homan, and I see both of them online.
Adrian, you should be able to speak.
Hello, all of you. I'm Adrian Novak, and I'm an eighth grader at CMS. Thanks for the opportunity to speak virtually since I'm homesick right now. So for my CMS eighth grade capstone research project, which is a project where we look into some of the problems in our community that we can help solve, I've researched remedying one of the pretty longstanding issues that I along with many other students have experienced at our school, which is our lunch periods. So I'm sharing my research and recommendations so I can inform the ed specs because with the new school being designed, we have an opportunity to fix this problem. So the CDC Healthy Schools Program recommends students get at least 20 minutes to eat our lunch to avoid the health problems that come with fast eating and give us time to socialize. And this doesn't really seem like a lofty goal, but CMS doesn't often reach this far. So a big factor of this issue is our lunch lines. While we have a 20 minute lunch period, if we allow for a 10 minute recess, we don't actually get to spend all that time eating. Students who buy lunch often have 10 plus minute waits in their lunch lines, which cuts their time to sit and eat in half. And at present, the lunch line has one exit per lunch room. We have two lunch rooms and one entrance. If we want to buy snacks, we go to the right most line for both food and snacks, which is packed with kids clamoring for a place in the line. And if we don't, the left line is pretty empty. It's mostly the snacks that hold up the line. So to fix this, I recommend separating the snack and lunch lines in the new school so that students can get their food quickly and leave. We'll also let them get snacks when they want to. When we construct the new school, it's essential to make sure that the lunch line has multiple exits and entrances, perhaps even two completely separate serving lines to fix this problem. Also, a few other things to consider. For one, the placement of the bathrooms. CMS bathrooms are quite far from lunch room and the auditorium you're all in, which cuts into mealtime and discourages students from using the bathroom, which is horrible. Exit recess, water fountains, and hand washing stations should all be close to the bathroom, to the lunch rooms. For example, the water bottle refill is currently a hallway away from the, a hallway away from the lunch room, which is not great, in order to maximize our mealtime and recess. So to conclude, if we want students like me to be able to stay focused in school and have a healthy and positive school environment, we need to look at all the time sinks we have in the lunch line and in the lunch room and get rid of them. Thank you for hearing my suggestions to build a better CMS. Special thanks to my teachers who helped me out, Mr. Kreis and Mr. Norris Aliva. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next up is Jackie Homan, online, followed by Jean Schmidt.
Good evening Board of Education members and Dr. Jones. As you know, I've been concerned about the usage of ARP S R three funding on transformative social emotional learning or CELL. So I took the time to learn everything I could about transformative CELL, including its commitment to equity, and I'm really shocked that you would ever consider launching such a controversial program in Greenwich, let alone that the superintendent has allegedly started implementing Yale's Ruler program at Eastern without board approval. Ruler is based on the collaborative for academic, social, and emotional learning or C A S S L's transformative CELL framework. It focuses on a concept called intersectionality. That's a term coined by Kimberley Crenshaw, who is the architect of critical race theory. Intersectionality describes the overlapping discrimination due to the interconnectedness of race, class, sex, gender, disability, religion, and so on. It's a core concept, a core component of CRT, according to Crenshaw. CRT first requires one to use an equity lens to uncover racism and hidden biases which are assumed to be systemic. Then intersectionality aims to generate coalitions between different groups with the intent of resisting and changing the status quo. That's the social justice element of CRT. When you go back to Castle's approach to center equity, it sounds just like CRT. It talks about identity, which specifically draws on the concept of intersectionality. It talks about agency, which describes one's capacity to make change. And then curiosity is about animating this self and social analysis and then taking action in the name of equity. Equity is another loaded term which suggests treating people unequally to obtain allegedly fair results. In fact, the State Board of Education says its core responsibility for educators is to do everything possible to ensure equity, not equality. Specifically, it says that educators need to be self-reflective so they're not blind at things like implicit bias and white privilege. That's probably why a white privilege unit has been taught in the high school sociology class since 2014. It also says that schools need to promote culturally responsive programs, except the research used to define culturally responsive cites the work of critical race theorists, including Ibram X. Kendi and Kimberley Crenshaw. So culturally responsive education is a euphemism for CRT, just like transformative CELL is. My questions to you tonight is, did you realize that these programs have shifted over the last three years to add CRT? And since Superintendent Jones has promised that she doesn't teach CRT, how will you rectify this with the unapproved Ruler program? What about the second step CELL program? Isn't second step the program that you're currently using? And it also relies on Castle's definition and offers CRT lessons. Are those being employed in the district too? I think parents deserve an answer to these questions. We've been waiting for a long time. Thank you for addressing this issue.
Is Jean Schmidt followed by Stephanie Cowie? Jean's online.
Jean, you can unmute yourself.
I'm there, sorry. Good evening Chairwoman Stowe, Dr. Jones, members of the Board, Cabinet members, and the GPS community. My name is Jean Schmidt, and I've been the principal at Koskow School for the last nine years. I'm here to speak about our math interventionists and our social workers. First of all, the benefits of our math interventionists. They target student instruction for students that are performing below grade level to bring them up to grade level standards. They provide high quality intervention that matches the students' needs and use their learning rate and level of performance to make important educational decisions to guide instruction. They provide increased time, narrowed focus, and reduce group size instruction and the intervention based on individual needs. Screens, they screen students to just identify those at risk for potential mathematical difficulties and provide those interventions. They provide explicit systematic instruction and targeted interventions. Present math learning is a multi-sensory approach in order to reach all of the learners. At Koskow, our interventions have provided professional development for teachers to analyze data from Lincoln and classroom assessments so the students can receive targeted in-class instruction. They have identified areas that the students could grow and provided strategies to help support these students. Our interventions have also analyzed grade level data to create targeted morning groups. We targeted second and third grade for our first cycle. They identified skills that needed to be taught based on the baseline data, and then they created frameworks of lessons for each of our grades. The data showed tremendous growth for these students that attended these groups. We repeated this process for the spring, this time we added fourth grade to the groupings. We are also grateful for our part-time school social workers, but we hope that the Board will consider making them full-time in the future for many reasons. Our social workers provide support to school psychologists to help manage caseloads and provide much-needed mental health support to all of our students, including meeting individually and with groups of students for support, for example, students that are experiencing divorce in their family, meeting with students in lunch bunches to encourage connections, support with regulations, transitions, social skills, peer relationships, anxiety, and to provide support for new students. They provide support for general education with truancy, anxiety, social skills, relationships, et cetera, and they're available to respond to crises that arise in the building, which sometimes our school psychologists are not available for. They help manage crisis intervention with DCF 211, and they act as our liaison with DCF. They provide family outreach, which is critical in these times with COVID. Being able to work with families to provide support and how to manage behaviors, connecting them to resources, family dynamics, peer relationships. Having another mental health provider allows for collaboration with our psychologists, the better for our students. Thank you.
Is it okay, we're going to combine our comments so that we can share?
You can take me off the list.
Oh, thank you.
So you have one last person.
Thank you.
We're taking three minutes to describe that. So, sorry. Good evening Chairwoman Stowe, Board of Ed members, and Superintendent Dr. Jones. I'm Steph Cowie, and Leigh LaHorn and I are the co-chairs of Greenwich High School PTA. We're speaking in support of the S R three funding for the transition to Greenwich High School Student Center. It is interesting that almost a year ago, we were doing this very same thing, our GHS community. Our GHS community today is as strong as it was in June of 2021. Leila and I serve on the reimagined Student Center Committee, composed of students, parents, and faculty. The Student Center, which is one acre in size indoors and is a hub of the school, has not changed since the, since the school was built in nineteen seventies. It works if you're looking to have a retro seventies party, but to support the student and faculty of today, it falls a few decades short. This will be a welcome facelift. These ideas will address the need to modernize the space to include technology-friendly support such as digital screens, charging stations, and outlets. Additionally, create new comfortable furniture seating spaces and all types. This was something that the students were asking for. This is, we, what we believe, the culture of GHS will be even better by striving to be a more desirable and functional space for students of all backgrounds. And backgrounds and social and emotional needs. The pandemic has shown us, my, my thing keeps jumping. But the pandemic has shown us so many things, but most of all, it has shown us flexibility. We need to reimagine our educational spaces. This is a project that will impact all students in the district, eventually one time or another. This will be a place where students will take pride, who may grow in with this space in ways not even thought of.
Um, as PTA President, our goal is for our students to find comfort in this one acre of space and maximize their potential in doing so. We need to create a more welcoming, inclusive, and higher-functioning space. One size does not fit all anymore for this generation of high school students. We need to add academic and technical-friendly resources to support student learning. We have been one, sorry, we have been and will continue to be an enthusiastic and supportive voice, as well as a partner in this process for this transformation. We hope that you will move forward with the SSR3 allocation for the GHS Student Center, and thank you so much for your service.
Second. Thank you. Thank you both for combining your time. Appreciate it. Thanks for all you do for GHS. Next up, Karen Philbin, followed by Adele Carroll.
Last June ninth, at the ARP SR3 Town Hall, the superintendent explained that proposed social emotional learning spending was for Ruler Training, which will be embedded into the curriculum, into the academics. The community was told that community feedback would continue until the application was submitted in August. June twenty-third, Mark Brackett, Board of Directors of Castle, began to train Eastern Middle School teachers in Ruler Training without a Board of Education vote or community input. September, Eastern Middle School began to pilot Ruler Training again without a Board of Education vote or community input. To date, there has been no oversight of the approximately six million already spent. Recently, the BOE Town Attorney Schellenberger gave an official opinion that the oversight of the funds first to the BET and then to the RTM is in legal order. Shortly after, the superintendent used tax dollars to secure a different but incomplete opinion from outside counsel. The opinion was incomplete as it did not look into the specifics of our town. The town RTM voted to maintain BET RTM oversight. The next morning, the superintendent requested full appropriation of the remaining nine point five million from the BET. This began the town oversight process. In an RTM meeting, I asked to see the budget line specifically for Ruler Training. I was told by the chair this information was in the BOE detailed monthly budget. I have reviewed all of the budget materials and have yet to find Ruler Training. Um, I have reviewed all the budget materials provided to the RTM, BET, BOE, and public, and have not found any budget item for Ruler Training. What is Ruler Training? Ruler Training is a seven-step action plan over two years to change the mission of the Greenwich Public Schools and embed transformative social, emotional learning into our core academics. What is the concern? Federal SR funding required the BOE to introduce the curriculum of transformational social, emotional learning CELL assessed with a Castle scoring. However, the BOE did not vote on this, so district must be implementing again without community input. This is an excerpt of information gathered and provided by a nurse practitioner in critical care who is a doctorate in education and lives in Connecticut. Use of transformational CELL sets up a social credit system of our children and will mandate social work or mental health services for low scores, whether parents want this or not. Sexual education outside of health and wellness and behavioral modification techniques do not belong in our schools. This is required in SR funding enlisted in CELL transformational curriculum. Sexual education related to transsexualism and gender studies is inappropriate to teaching younger grades and does not belong in public education with public tax pay or dollars. Use of transformational CELL's curriculum is a quiet way of introducing critical race theories.
Adele Carroll, followed by Megan Galletta.
Good evening. My name is Adele Carroll. I'm here tonight to ask some questions and talk about the Central Middle School Educational Plan. I have two children, one in Koskow Elementary and the other at Central. First, I want to thank Dr. Jones and Tom Healy for responding so quickly to my emails and answering my questions almost immediately. I still have more, but I'll put together a list so we can communicate more efficiently. Um, I recognize and appreciate the first steps taken, which was soliciting feedback from staff and now parents. Transparency during this process is very important. It became even more important as I started reading through the plan. I learned that this is not a mere replacement of a school building. It is also a redesign of our children's education and curriculum. On page two, the section called rationale for the project made sense to me. It talks about the age of the structure, equipment, safety concerns, and classroom sizes. Nowhere in that rationale section does it mention changes to the curriculum. When I got to page three, the section called long-range educational plan, I learned that there are more changes proposed than just a new building. Mixed in with bullet points describing a new roof, plumbing, and heating is mention of new curriculum. I'd like to learn more about the proposed curriculum changes. I'll admit, my head was spinning trying to Google all these different acronyms such as C3 Framework, MTSS, NGSS, SRBI, and I'm sure I missed others. Page twenty-nine was most revealing. I, I do understand that this is a draft, so I'm not trying to call anyone out for clerical errors, but I have some concerns. In-school suspension classroom is not an academic class and should not be listed under that section. Same with SRBI Math and ELL, which are special support programs. The spreadsheet seems to be misleading and needs work. In reviewing the new proposal, I asked for the current state classroom numbers, so I could do a proper comparison. Based on the information I received, it appears the plan will be to increase the number of special ed support programs from four to nineteen. Are we predicting further failure for our children? And why are we, aren't we trying to correct this in middle school? Why are we trying to correct this in middle school? Earlier intervention at the elementary school level seems to make more sense. The trend over the last several years have been to coddle kids. Parents are not innocent in this. In many ways, they have tied the school system's disciplinary arm behind its back. COVID and all that went along with it on the school level has only added to the overall weakened mental state of our children. Turning half of Central Middle School into what amounts to be a mental health facility is doing a severe disservice to our children's future. It creates an alternate universe which you are from life. Take our children out of that bubble.
Appreciate your time.
Get them back to the middle.
Feel free to email the board. Thank you so much. All right. Next up, Megan Galletta, followed by Frances Wu-Nobe.
Good evening. After hearing from an overwhelming number of parents and town residents while campaigning and through my continued involvement in the community, I need to convey to the board that the citizens of this town do not support what's occurring in our schools. Parents are bonding together and their awareness is only growing. Parents and taxpayers are expressing their anger and dismay over being denied a say in their children's education. Promoting sexualized, politicized, dark, dumbed-down curricula and gender education is irresponsible. This is not what most educated, rational adults want in academia. I remain committed to the many parents, grandparents, students, teachers, town employees, and taxpayers to voice their concerns about improving transparency in curricula and getting back to fundamentals, including the fundamental right of parents to speak against the garbage that is being passed off as curriculum. I will also continue to defend the teachers who are caught in a bind, the swift changes in curriculum to forced vaccinations. Many faculty and staff are parents, and they share the same concerns. There are several recent questions that have come to my attention that parents would like answers to. One, why are we taking SR funding? With one of the largest school budgets in the country, it is not needed, and it comes with strings attached. I said this back from two years ago. Why is Tony Jones not providing full transparency over the allocation of roughly fourteen million dollars? This is being viewed by many as a slush fund. Central Middle School new building proposal, can you define what a de-escalation room attached to a self-containment room is? That sounds horrifying. Number four, why is, why as part of the CMS building proposal are we including integrate equity, social, emotional learning, and mastery across all curricular areas in the plan document? Five, and to the elected members of the BOE, why did it take the RTM to get involved to ensure that there will now be oversight over the SR slush fund? Where is the transparency of the fourteen million dollar spend, the stated goals, and the metrics that will be used to determine if the spend met the objectives? Lastly, why are we seeking feedback about the improvements to the GHS Student Center? What, without having a budget allocation for the project, the objectives for the use of the space in the long-term plan? I could go on and on about the long list of concerns from parents, including the plan to address learning loss during COVID disruption, lack of transparency regarding Ruler Training, frustration over the BOE from citizens who voted them in for not ensuring transparency and accountability. Finally, we ask the board to hold our superintendent accountable and to provide answers to these questions on behalf of the citizens that voted for you and for the taxpayers and parents in this community. If our schools continue to fail, Greenwich as we know it fails too.
Three minutes.
Hello, this is Frances Wu-Nobe, mom of three GPS students. I thank you for keeping the hybrid format. I'm home with a sick kid and am delighted to still be able to honor Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Month, Military Appreciation Month, and Mental Health Awareness Month. Thank you for all you do in our community. Tonight, in support of my son, who spoke tonight, and all our current and future CMS students, I will share a book by my son's second favorite picture book author, Chris Van Dusen. Please enjoy selections from If I Built a School. Jack on the playground said to Miss Jane, this school's okay, but it's pitifully plain. The builder who built this, I think, should be banned. It's nothing at all like the school I have planned. Right off the lobby to get to your class, I'd set up a system of tubes made of glass. You'd hop in a pod, press the number, then zoom, and under ten seconds, you're right at your room. All of the classrooms are built onto towers that sprout from the schoolyard like color flowers and like giant petals that welcome the day the roofs open up in a similar way. Panels fold back and they let in the sun, which frankly makes being there that much more fun. It's off to the gym and this place is so cool. Around it, please note my perimeter pool. The pool's a deep oval that everyone likes. You race underwater on submarine bikes. Up there is my trampoline basketball court. It's partly a bounce house and partly a sport. There's also a rock wall and here's something new. I've added some skydiving wing tunnels too. It's now time for recess. Let's head out the door. My playground is awesome. So much to explore. Fly on the zip line way up in the sky or slide down the twisty slide three stories high. And after that, if you're hot and you're beat, then you can go tubing. Now that would be sweet. My school will amaze you. My school will astound. By far the most fabulous school to be found. Perfectly planned and impeccably clean. On a scale one to ten, it's more like fifteen. And learning is fun in a place that's fun too. If I built a school, that's just what I do. Thank you, GPS, Dan Watson, and all the teachers, staff, and administration that make school so fun every day. Let me end with a quote that I heard on a state of teaching webinar earlier today. We are here tonight for their future, not our past. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is she online? I don't see her here. No one's getting up.
Isabel is here.
She is? Oh, I'm sorry. There she is. Sorry. Thank you, Mr. May.
She was here. Yeah. You guys see Isabel?
I'm sorry. So this should be addressing the CMS and specs, the sound system. Yes. Oh, that's so interesting. Okay. Good evening, board. I'd like to thank you for this opportunity to speak tonight. Um, I'm going to start off by saying I have two younger sisters, eight years old and eleven, you're eleven years old. One in second grade and one in fifth grade, going into middle school, Central to be specific. And as you know, Central's been having a little bit of a dilemma, but right now I'm not worried for Central. I'm more worried about my school, Greenwich High School. So my name is Isabel Gega. I'm a junior at Greenwich High School, and today I'm speaking on behalf of my school, asking for continued support and funding the renovation for this, this, the Student Center. When I first stepped through GHS doors three years ago, I couldn't help but be in awe of the Student Center. But our one acre of space, which allows us to develop as students, members of society, and human beings, is in desperate need of improvements. The current Student Center serves as a beating heart of our institution, but investment in the space was at their SR3 funds, but support and reinforce our district's commitment to providing a safer and equitable education for all our students. This renovation would allow Greenwich High School to be a place of flexibility, meeting the dynamic needs of the students. As students, we deserve the best resources to grow as individuals in social and emotional capacities. By supporting this funding, you also support the improvement of school culture, support inclusivity, reestablish behavioral norms, and balance the dynamicism of current organized chaos. You support my future, my sister's future, and generations to come. We need this. Trust me, we really do. I do want to thank the board today, and I appreciate everything the board has done for me, especially within my eleven years at Greenwich Public Schools. But today, I will beg, I will politely ask for you all to reconsider the allocation of these funds to fuel the future of our school. This is for your kids in our future. Please make the right choice. Thank you.
Good evening, Chairwoman Stowe, Dr. Jones, members of the Board of Education, cabinet members, and guests. I'm Kathleen Ramirez, the Assistant Principal of North Mayanis School. Thank you for this opportunity to share Angela and my thoughts on the significant impact of the social worker and math interventionists at North Mayanis. While I can only speak to North Mayanis's experience, the effect of these additional staff members has been felt in all of the elementary schools. While COVID has been difficult for all of us, it has been particularly impactful on our students. Our social worker has been a vital addition to our staff to help our students, who aren't necessarily mandated for counseling. These students need extra support as they are experiencing new feelings of anxiety and stress due to COVID, along with other students who need help with emotional regulation, processing a change at home, social skills, peer relationships, and/or coming to North Mayanis as a new student. The North Mayanis staff has also benefited from the addition of our social worker as she has been able to push into classrooms to give teachers tips on how to better support all students in the class with emotion regulation and other behavioral teachers have more time with other students. Our interventionists have been able to push into grades K and 1 classrooms to support these early learners before they are in need of intervention. Also, since these small groups are very fluid, students who have met their intervention goals are able to exit, allowing space for more students to benefit from these interventions. Finally, Dr. Pamela Cantor, a renowned child psychiatrist, says, "The driver to learning is social connection." These additional adults in our building not only provide much-needed social, emotional, and academic instruction, but also give students another opportunity at making the vital social connection needed for learning. Please consider continuing to support both the social site, the social workers, and math interventionists in our elementary schools. Thank you and have a great evening.
Thank you very much. Next up, Sally Davis, followed by Andy Artakos. Sorry.
Good evening. I'm Sally Davis, Chair of the Greenwich Recycling Advisory Board, and I'm here to advocate for the WASTE Proposal prepared by the PTA Council, Waste Free Greenwich, and the Town Sustainability Committee. Greenwich Public Schools contribute significantly to the waste stream. However, a large percentage of waste can be reduced, recycled, composted, or replaced with reusables, resulting in fiscal savings, environmental benefits, and educational opportunities. Students need to be educated about methods of dealing with the waste we produce, how the environment has affected, how important it is to protect the planet and its natural resources. Reducing our waste stream is absolutely essential. Soon, our trash will no longer be burned at the Waste to Energy Facility and likely will have to be sent out of state to a landfill. As we all know, it's the law to recycle items such as paper, cans, bottles, and plastics 1 and 2. Therefore, it's necessary that appropriate recycling containers are available in cafeterias, classrooms, and throughout the school, always twinned with trash bins. In 2019, along with the PTA Council Green Schools Committee, we instituted a cafeteria waste reduction program at several elementary and middle schools. This was most successful in reducing overall trash by an average of 55%. The goal of this program was to decrease lunchroom waste by recycling hard plastic, aluminum foil, and drink containers, removing liquids, and at some schools, composting fresh produce. Unfortunately, due to COVID, this was suspended. Now, it is strongly recommended that the cafeteria waste reduction program be reimplemented district-wide in the fall. Outdoor composting bins were provided at most schools for the collection of fruits and vegetables, but the tonnage collected was limited in comparison to using a contracted organic recycler. It also depended on parents, teachers, and students to maintain it, as the union contract restricted custodians from transporting food scraps to the outdoor bins. Volunteers are a great resource. I know, I've worked for them for many years. But the system has to be incorporated into the administration, from the superintendent down to the lunch monitors and custodial staff. I urge the board to implement a sustainable waste management program that encourages environmental stewardship, civic responsibility, and leadership by the Greenwich Public Schools. Thank you.
Next up, Andy, followed by Hayden Alexander.
Good evening, Board of Ed and Dr. Jones. My name is Angie Hartifullis, and tonight I'm speaking with my PTAC Green Schools co-chair, Hadon. It is my hope that each of you have had the time to review the Zero Waste Proposal. In the week since our last meeting, green reps from each school have sent me observations regarding the recycling status at their school. The purpose of this was to have real-time data on where we stand and where we can hopefully get before the close of school this year. The reps were not advocating for any changes at the moment, but merely reporting what currently exists. The three questions I surveyed for were, one, does your school have its recycling containers in the cafeteria? Yes or no? Two, if your school was one of the six schools that had new sorting stations pre-pandemic, are those sorting stations in the cafeteria now, including all the components, which would be the gray liquids, blue recycling, black trash, green composting bins, along with signage in both English and Spanish? And they're supposed to just leave me comments? And then third, are there recycling bins in classrooms? Yes, no, or stop? The results are as follows. Out of the 14 GPS schools, I had 11 report back. So for the first question, six out of 11 have proper recycling bins in the cafeteria. We're happy about that. However, five out of 11 do not have recycling bins in the cafeteria at the moment. For the second question, which was only regarding the six schools that had those sorting stations pre-pandemic, two out of the six have the full stations back out and running. For two, it was a little bit unclear, and another two out of the six do not have their pre-pandemic stations back out. And third, regarding the recycling in the classrooms, there seem to be containers in many classrooms, but this was not a strong sample size, as not many classrooms were visited. It was noted that offices and media centers did have paper recycling bins, and we thought that was really great. We asked that an effort be made to have recycling bins back in all GPS cafes before the end of this school year, and that the two to four sorting stations that existed pre-pandemic be put back in those respective cafeterias. This is seemingly small task. Our goal is that the structure be in place so that next fall, our volunteers can hit the ground running to educate students on recycling and proper sorting. Waste reduction is so important. Our Zero Waste Proposal is not just about getting the physical structure in place, although that's needed. It's about teaching procedure, what materials are accepted and where they go, and the whys, and the need for district-wide cooperation, both the bottom-up and the top-down approach. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much. Next up, Hayden Alexander, followed by Maria Weston.
Thank you guys so much for having me. I really appreciate it. Dr. Jones, my daughter goes to Central, and you know, I appreciate it. There's an old saying, you know, there's a bear defecate in the woods. The answer is yes, and the fact that a non-binary student has to have their own bathroom, it's crazy that we're even fighting over this. But we're kind of having an issue with my daughter Catherine because she identifies as a cat. She's a trans species, and nobody's willing to put a litter box in the classroom. And for that, she's getting a lot of disrespect. The teachers are thinking that she's some kind of joke, and she's having an identity crisis. So, Dr. Jones, I would just implore you to actually take steps to be more forward-thinking because when we think about the transition movement, or the transgender movement, or just the transition of a child in this day and age, we don't follow the same binary rules that you grew up with. We need people that are less bigoted and less white supremacists and people that are open-minded because my daughter is just, she's not alone in her thinking. She has other classmates that have these same ideas, but they feel too afraid to actually come out and request these things. So I would like for a more inclusionary faculty to actually support my daughter because just the idea that she just wants a little litter box so she can tinkle in and she can defecate in, that's not too much to ask for. But once again, it's a system of white supremacy in a school district that's, you know, very affluent people. They're not able to take off their MAGA hats or get off their Trump train that they lost and just help my daughter out. Now, listen, ever since, you know, my wife's boyfriend has moved in, my daughter has been having a lot of issues with this transition, and she's not really getting along with them. And I'll be honest, I'm not getting along with them that much. Her OnlyFans account has gone down because now my wife is, you know, constantly napping with her boyfriend, and it's just making our life terrible. So when she goes to school, all she wants to do is be able to use a litter box where she can just go number one or go number two, and she doesn't have to use the non-binary, she doesn't have to use the boys, she doesn't have to use the girls. Now, if you guys will not make these, you know, if you not will do this for her, we're going to have to get, you know, involved legally. And to be honest, I'm in debilitating debt. I have a horrible gambling addiction. So for me right now, hiring an attorney, I'm going to have to get another job. I'm going to have to take a loan out from a bank, and the only way to do that would be to commit some sort of fraud. So you guys are literally going to make me break the law in order to support my daughter. And so I just want to ask yourselves to ask yourself this, are you really being inclusive?
Thank you so much, Hayden, for your time. Next up, Maria Weston, followed by Sam. I'm sorry, I'm getting wrong, Jeff. Sorry about that. Is Maria online? I'm sorry. Marla? Do you see Marla Weston online? Okay, we're going to skip that and go to Sam. Is it Jeff? Jaffe?
They can speak.
Go ahead, you can unmute yourself, Sam. Get started.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can.
Good evening, Board, and thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. Hi, my name's Sam Jaffe, and I'm a sophomore at Greenwich High School. I'm here to ask for the support of the Zero Waste Schools Program proposed by Waste Free Greenwich. Over the past two years here, I've observed an excessive lack of efficient waste disposal. I believe that COVID has had a significant effect on the sustainability programs that were in place pre-pandemic, such as the pilot Zero Waste Schools Program at EMS. It is important that we continue our efforts in waste reduction and sustainability. Throughout the past couple of years, waste has escalated internationally through COVID containment strategies such as disposable masks. The climate is still digressing rapidly, and if anything, problems were escalated by the pandemic. It's intrinsic to continue our efforts towards a waste-free society despite pandemic restrictions and Zero Waste Schools Program is an effective step forward. There's little education in regards to what recycling even is in Greenwich Public Schools, nonetheless a proper recycling system in place. At Greenwich High School, the Student Center is a good example of the current status of recycling law. A couple of recycling bins are scattered in the large room and are often filled with trash, not recyclables. The Zero Waste Schools Program would be an effective solution to this problem. Many of my peers don't understand the importance in recycling and composting. By furthering education on the effects waste has on the environment, we can garner more support for waste reduction. In addition, outdoor composting bins would be an easy and useful solution to the waste problem. Natural and low-cost ways to improve our environment are imperative to the development of waste reduction programs. Sustainability is one of the most important causes right now for my generation. In order to save our world from the oncoming and current effects of climate change, we need to act swiftly. While both fighting for this cause at the local and national levels, we can work to make effective change. Locally, taking steps such as the Zero Waste Schools Program can further the creation of a sustainable school system. My generation is the future, and it is necessary for us to be educated on the impacts we can have on the environment. By teaching students steps they can take through simple day-to-day things such as recycling and composting, we can further waste reduction in schools and teach valuable lessons on environmental protection. I'd like to end with a Chinese proverb that I believe aligns with my message. Be not afraid of growing slowly, be afraid of only standing still. Currently, we are standing still. The Zero Waste Schools Program can leave a lasting impact on our future. Thank you for listening.
Thank you so much. Next up, Kristen Neminsky, followed by Amy Moose.
When I was growing up, I was considered a tomboy. I didn't play with dolls and I didn't like wearing dresses. I preferred to play with Maxxbox cars and tow trucks. I would go out into the swamp behind our backyard with my siblings and cousins and play in the mud, catch frogs, and build forts. No one ever suggested to me that maybe my gender identity did not match my gender assigned at birth. But if I was a little girl acting that way and doing those activities now, even right here in Greenwich, there's a very good chance that a teacher or school counselor could be telling me this very thing, and without my parents' consent or knowledge. And if an adult authority figure in school was saying those things to me as a child, I would probably believe them. I might become gender-confused child because of the thoughts an adult authority figure put in my head, which are then reinforced with SEL, progressive gender ideology, in the classroom. I might even like that it makes me feel special or gets me attention based on the progressive gender propaganda surrounding me in school, advertising, and all forms of media. When I hit puberty and hormones caused mood swings and depression, it may be blamed on my gender confusion or gender dysphoria. A school psychologist, counselor, or teacher may suggest hormone treatment and beginning to transition. I might start using the boys' bathroom or the new non-binary bathrooms that they're putting in Central Middle School. All this could be happening without my parents' consent. And if I did begin this transition process, I would be setting myself up for a lifetime of anxiety, depression, or even suicide because in actuality, I was being psychologically manipulated into transgenderism. Transgender people, also known as non-binary, pan-gender, gender queer, gender fluid, bi-gender, poly-gender, and two-spirit, have a lifetime suicide attempt rate of 30 to 81% as compared with the general population rate of 1 to 5%. Transgender people also only account for 0.5% of the population. Buried in the very high trans suicide rate are many cases in which people have wrongfully transitioned because they were misdiagnosed and made to believe gender dysphoria was to blame for their anxiety, depression, feelings of inadequacy, or unacceptance instead of getting the proper counseling or treatment for what is most likely very normal teenage angst due to puberty and hormones, or some other emotional or psychological issue, or no issue at all. This is not about acceptance, it is about adult propaganda confusing children. Children are called children for a reason. They're born in empty slate and only know what they are taught or learned through experience. Children do not understand, nor do they need to be exposed to concepts of sex and gender identity. When schools introduce these concepts to children at inappropriate ages, they're greatly influencing their psychological development and teaching them to believe in progressive ideologies before they're even capable of understanding them and formulating their own opinions. Even the LGBTQ+ community is confused on these issues as they have an almost never-ending list of names and flags for the 72-plus genders or no genders, which overlap, duplicate, and even contradict each other. This explains why UConn online college registration now includes these gender choices: male, female, gender neutral, transgender, non-binary, agender, pan-gender, gender queer, two-spirit, third gender, and other. I ask again, what are we doing to our children?
Three minutes. Thank you so much for your time. Next up, Amy Moose, then I'm Marla.
Good evening, Dr. Jones, Chairperson Stowe, and BOE members. I'd like to speak to school climate concerns and Ruler, spelled R-U-L-E-R, not R-O-L-L-E-R, as has been mentioned in previous meetings. Ruler's been an ongoing area of concern at these meetings, and I, as well as other Eastern parents, have been waiting for leadership to speak to this, which has not happened. Having read his most recent book and having seen him speak last night with a bunch of educators wearing Ruler T-shirts, I wanted to dispel some of the misinformation. Maybe one day we will be lucky enough to have Mr. Brackett actually speak here for GPS. Mark Brackett, founder and director of the Yale Center for Emotional Intelligence, and a professor at the Child Study Center at Yale, is the lead developer of Ruler, an evidence-based approach to social-emotional learning that has been adopted by nearly 2,000 pre-k through high school schools across the US and other countries. This includes Wilton, New Canaan, Ridgefield, Weston, and Westport. Ruler just stands for R, recognizing emotions in self and others; U, understanding the cause and consequences of emotions; L, labeling emotions accurately; E, expressing emotions; and R, regulating emotions effectively. Ruler aims to infuse the principles of emotional intelligence into the heart of schools, enhancing how students learn, teachers teach, families parent, and leaders lead. They have found that students who receive Ruler have better academic performance, positive shifts in school climate, better quality relationships with peers and teachers. Students in schools using Ruler have less bullying and aggressive behavior after one year. In fact, research under review shows that early adolescent students who reported significantly lower connectedness with teachers in comparison to their peers scored significantly lower on all adaptive indicators and significantly higher on maladaptive indicators in comparison to students who reported high and average levels of connectedness. What does this mean? Essentially, the adolescent's mental health is at risk in these situations. Unfortunately, because this is a pilot paid for by Greenwich Alliance, not ESTR funds, our students will not receive Ruler at Easter until at least 2023. So my sixth grader will be lucky to take part by eighth grade. Maybe it's difficult for parents to understand why this is needed, so it's easier to lie and say it's a pathway to CRT. I don't know. Maybe it would be helpful if the district shared its data on risk assessment so parents better understand where Ruler is being piloted. For instance, how many students are reporting depression and anxiety or express suicidality? How many students have engaged in aggressive behaviors toward their peers or staff? How many bullying reports have been made? How many reports have been made to GPD for assault? Yes, that's right, assault. Parents run of concerns that students aren't being taught about suicide and mental health concerns. That is exactly what SEL, that's S-E-L, not sell, that social emotional... They have found that students who receive Ruler have better academic performance, positive shifts in school climate, better quality relationships with peers and teachers. Students in schools using Ruler have less bullying and aggressive behavior after one year. In fact, research under review shows that early adolescent students who reported significantly lower connectedness with teachers in comparison to their peers scored significantly lower on all adaptive indicators and significantly higher on maladaptive indicators in comparison to students who reported high and average levels of connectedness. What does this mean? Essentially, the adolescent's mental health is at risk in these situations. Unfortunately, because this is a pilot paid for by Greenwich Alliance, not S.R. Funds, our students will not receive Ruler at Easter until at least 2023. So my sixth grader will be lucky to take part by eighth grade. Maybe it's difficult for parents to understand why this is needed, so it's easier to lie and say it's a pathway to CRT. I don't know. Maybe it would be helpful if the district shared its data on risk assessment so parents better understand where Ruler is being piloted. For instance, how many students are reporting depression and anxiety or express suicidality? How many students have engaged in aggressive behaviors toward their peers or staff? How many bullying reports have been made? How many reports have been made to GPD for assault? Yes, that's right, assault. Parents run out of concerns that students aren't being taught about suicide and mental health concerns. If that is exactly what SEL, that's S-E-L, not sell, that social-emotional learning is trying to address. We often hear that kids should be learning this stuff at home, and I'm sure they are, but it isn't school that they really learn how to use it.
Thank you very much, Amy.
Evening, board members. I'm Nicholas Sosa, an eighth-grade student at Central Middle School. Over the past three months, I have been researching how we could teach financial literacy in middle schools. So once I concluded my research, I decided that it was time to implement it. So I've come here this evening to propose a new class for all Greenwich Middle Schools. The middle school students of Greenwich would greatly benefit from a financial literacy class that could be offered as a semester elective. In this class, students will learn the basics of the financial system, including how banks work, the stock market, budgeting, and investment, even things as simple as what it means to have a saving and checking account. I believe that this class is an essential component to a student's education that's currently missing in all curriculums offered in Greenwich Middle Schools. As a student, we should be learning the fundamentals of money early on to prepare us for when we become independent from our parents, but even how to manage our own money from a summer job. In addition, we will learn the value of saving money over time and how to spend it responsibly. Ideally, this class would be a one-semester elective that students from sixth to eighth grade could take. Students who sign up for this elective would be taught key foundational tools in understanding finance, that would prepare them for the real world. But even on a more basic level, students would be better prepared for the economics and other finance classes offered at Greenwich High School and beyond. Part of the vision of the graduate is to help students develop their individual capacities to conduct themselves in an ethical and responsible manner, critically interpret, evaluate, and synthesize information, and explore, define, and solve complex problems. A personal finance class fits nicely into the vision of the graduate by giving students the opportunity to learn the life skills that they will use every day of their life. Everyone needs to know how to manage money wisely every day. At the core, this class addresses a practical need that's not currently addressed in our curriculum. Over the remainder of this year, I will be putting together a course curriculum that I plan to share with you. The board, Dr. Jones, and the curriculum committee will review this implement, will review and implement for future Greenwich Middle School students. I appreciate your consideration and look forward to talking further with you on this very important subject. Good evening.
With that, we now turn to, we made it an hour, so thank you everyone for being so accommodating. Next up, we turn to our monthly reports, Dr. Jones. I'm gonna keep mine pretty short since it's already eight-thirty. I just want to say congratulations at New Lab. They had their Addams Family musical, which was actually funded by Alliance. And so thank you to the Alliance for their continued support of all of our schools. And I also want to say thank you for all of our educators who are out speaking tonight, our principals, just on behalf, so that you can hear their voices, because I think often that's something that's missing. You probably hear us more at these meetings because they do run long, so it's hard for them to be here, but thank you to all of them. And I know I don't want to steal Joe's thunder, but just about the Gang with Lights, I won't say anymore, except that. I do want to say thank you to everybody who has worked so hard, including you, Joe, on Cardinal Stadium. It's just been, I think, a phenomenal project. And again, you heard, I think, it mentioned tonight, it helps change culture. You know, when you address the learning environment, the athletic environment, it makes a difference for our students. So that's all from me tonight. Can I ask us one question based on the PTAC feedback? North Street School and the Ice Hockey Ring, can we just address that because it was news to everyone, I think? So there was a meeting probably about a month ago where, from the first selectman who organized it, asked for the schools to come and have a conversation, and they asked us if there were any properties in the school at all where it would even be feasible. And so Mr. Watson did go through because we felt like we needed to, you know, work with the town on this, look at every single site, that school site, and the only one that was even remotely possible was North Street. That was the end of the conversation. So there was a meeting of the actual ice hockey committee, which is a public meeting. That's not our meeting. The board isn't part of this committee, to my knowledge. And so that committee has, I think, been tasked to try to figure out what they're going to propose. And Mr. Watson has been very, very clear with the committee that should they want to utilize anything to do with the schools, they have to come to the board. And so he reiterated that at that meeting the other day he was invited to. And again, it would be a concept, and they would have to bring you the full information because we really don't know anything about what's being proposed. But I do know you have to have the electric, you know, quite strong electric to run it. You have to be close to water, be close to the water. We don't even really know what the timeframe would be. You know, this would be up, is it a tent, what type of structure? We don't know any of that. So I do know that Jill Flood is sending a short note to her families, I think in the morning, just to make sure they all know that if anything was going to be considered, it would come to the board. That's a board decision. Absolutely. I just wanted to make that clear. Thank you very much. Yes, Michael Joseph.
Yeah, Tony, we heard a couple of times tonight about sustainability, about restoring some programs that existed before the pandemic in London. Is there anything you can add about progress there?
It really depends on every building. They're all a little bit different. You know, initially, when the compost bins rolled out, some buildings it worked, some buildings it's more challenging, and there are a whole host of issues. As you know, our school sites are all over Greenwich. Some had tried composting several years ago, and it was attracting like foxes and rodents and things of that nature because they're close to a wooded area, and they felt like it was making the playground not safe. We have some buildings where it's not in our custodial contract for them to have to take stuff out. It was an addition to their job, so it would have to be negotiated. You know, we are a contract state. So the buildings that, when they're ready to put back their recycling, it'll go back in. We've got our captories all open, but it is different at every building. And some buildings, when it gets to the multiple, like the liquid station and where it's much more complex, it really depends on, is there a student club that's leading it? Is there a teacher, you know, that's real passionate about it, or the parent volunteers? But we don't have the people just to make every building look the same. And each building kind of does what they can do. Just to follow up with that, like, someone from Waste Free Greenwich that I've actually been speaking with, and I think they had planned to make a proposal to us this month, but they weren't prepared in time, so I believe we're going to hear something, it sounded like, next month.
On that topic, what about where we were with the dishwashers? I know we had talked about the dishwashers, instead of all the styrofoam we're throwing away and blasting forks and things like that.
So we actually, I think it was last summer, so we really looked at the high school campus, just trying to see if we could put a dishwasher back in there just for high school, because that would be a third of our campus. One of the challenges we had, and we recognized quickly, is where the dishwasher was many years ago. The dishwasher could kind of go in the same area, but where all the trays are and things of that nature have been made into like an office. So we realized it was going to be a little bit more significant. In initial assessment, we think that it's not going to cause huge water issues. We were concerned about that, so from stormwater aspect, as you know. And so we have, I think it's thirty-five thousand in the budget this current year, and it's actually sitting in the captauri budget to study so that we know exactly what we would have to do. Is it going to be a half-million-dollar project? Or is it going to be a hundred thousand? We just don't know, but we're going to get all those answers this current year to start with the high school. What we do know is there was a push pre-COVID for us to run out of the high school and try to deliver all over the district. After two years of delivering lunches all over the district, we just don't believe it's sustainable for us to do that. We did it with lunches, but dirty dishes and things of that nature would be even more complex.
Thank you.
All right, let's do committee reports. Let me start with you, Joe.
Sure. I've got to start with some bad news. I just heard from the Greenwich Boys RV Team that's at the national championship right now. They lost in the first round.
Hey, Joe, I think you turned it to no. Try that again.
Can you hear me now? Who needs a microphone? Okay, this is a little better. All right, that's a little sad news, but we're through with that now. Let's go into some happier news. Tony, you just talked about the first night game at Cardinal Stadium. We finally got the approval to play a game under the lights. It was an incredible game. The boys lacrosse team played to double overtime against one of the top teams in the country, Darien. And we lost by, well, we lost in double overtime, unfortunately. It was a very good game. Another project we're working on that I want to mention is the waterfall project. We finally settled or thought about a day to do the cleanup. As we see at the top of campus, we see the waterfall areas once again looking like an abandoned lot. I don't know if the same kid eats pizza there every day or puts that pizza box is still there. I know if you drive by, you look in the weeds there and you see a pizza box. So I don't know if it's the same one every time, or if it's one that gets put there every day. But we have to address the garbage that has built up there. We have to cut the weeds down. We're not going to be intrusive to the soil because we know that's a topic we have to work on very carefully. We're just going to clean it up. So the group is going to get together on the fourth and attempt to do a cleanup on that area. That's it for me. Thank you.
Okay, Christina.
Two things. The budget committee met earlier this week. Obviously, some of the items are on our agenda. But we talked about our operating budget for this year, closing the gap.
It's a bird. It's a bird. Christina, this is the most exciting finance report we've ever had.
They ran away. They went there. Go get them, Batman.
We'll have the bat cave as part of the end step.
What I love is that we're all to the assumption that kids somehow get that in here, like, under a door.
That's only nice, honey. Okay, so we had a budget committee meeting. We talked about the current year's budget. We also talked about, not the BETM, the RTM, voted on what we're going to do on the next month's budget, on next year's budget, and we had a discussion about ARP. So I can chime in if we get to those things. Sean O'Shaw will present all of that in a bit. And then visiting the GHS entryway building committee, the path of the state does not move quickly. We still do not yet have the final approval to be able to go out to bid. We are hopeful that we will have that in the next week. We cannot go out to bid till we get the state letter that says we can go out to bid. So we're hopeful that if we have it, we'll go out to bid, we'll get this back at the end of June. But it's obviously safe to say we will not be breaking ground until sometime this summer. The committee is already discussing the logistics involved in that, and we'll report back when I have more information. Yes.
I feel like I haven't heard anything said based on the bat.
The question I have is, given that the state has taken a while, I mean, how long do we really, I mean, do we really think that we can move the bidding process that quickly in order to still break ground this summer?
Basically, we had our meeting with the state, and they requested some additional documents, which sounded relatively easy to put together, but they wanted them all submitted as a package. There was something from the town sewer, you know, kind of miscellaneous things. So the plan was those were going in this week with the hope that we'd get back the approval next week. It's just they will need to kind of dot the ice across the teeth. Our RFP is ready to go out the moment that state approval comes in. So our committee made a decision about how to manage that. So the moment the state says you can go out to bid, the plan is within a day or two to go out to bid. It's been organized in as bad an efficient way as we can possibly do.
Sounds good. Thanks. Michael Joseph.
Yeah, the Strategic Plan Committee met last week. There's a lot going on behind the scenes that, it sounds like I give the same report every month, and that we are on the timeline and we're bringing something to the board soon, and that is true. If you recall, the timeline that we presented at the board back in February, we were hoping to have draft stretch goals to the board next month to talk to. Remember, when we talk about stretch goals, we're talking about large, three, four, five-year goals that are ambitious and really grow the work of the district moving forward. One of the themes of our conversations, or the conversations of the last few months, are about, and you heard it in the comments, many of our administrators tonight, is a lot of the good work that's going on in the district and how the strategic plan can align and should be aligning a lot of that work together in conjunction, moving towards certain stretch goals. So on our meeting last week, we looked at a draft template, and the leadership team, which is being led by Dr. Jones, is taking that back. Someone else's might, okay. The leadership team is taking that back and working on that. So we're going to meet again before the next board meeting, provide comments, and hopefully in the next board meeting, we'll be talking about these goals and head towards next year.
All right, I have a question.
The bat has exited the building.
I was going to ask, like, kids are coming to this building tomorrow. I'd like to know if the bat is...
I got it in the cafeteria, and then I got it out of the cafeteria.
You have really tackled a lot of issues tonight, everyone. Very impressed. Okay. With that...
Kathleen, can I do?
Oh, yeah, sorry, Jaffe.
Just the Greenwich Alliance update. I have two updates. The Greenwich Alliance Board voted on their reaching out grants for the 2023 school year and approved funding of $148,000 for seven grants. Largest grant recipient is for Science Beyond the Classroom, which is for all Greenwich Public School first and second graders. A full listing of the grants will soon be available on the website. And also wanted to note that the alliance has three high school senior interns, two working for the Avid Success Program, and one helping maintain the database and writing some articles for the newsletter. And what I hear is that they are terrific and hardworking, so great.
Great. Thank you. Good update. Okay, with that, let's start our meeting. Western Middle School Soil Update. And I'll be very brief tonight because we did have a long report at our last meeting, and that puts in your board package, just a reminder of where all that testing that has taken place. About a week and a half ago, we did get, well, actually, last week, we did get an update that the last round of testing, we believe, they're not going to ask for more, which was fantastic news after all the testing that's taken place. So they are preparing the actual remediation plan right now because you have to get to the point where it seems to approve before we can submit. That, we hope, will go in over the next month. Then it will go into the state. They will review it probably for a couple of months. And while they're doing that review, at some point in time, we'll also hold the public hearing, which many of you probably remember when we were working on the high school field. We had to do that as well to give the community an opportunity to speak if they are in favor of the project or not. I'm sure we can pack the house for that one. But again, it's looking really good. The biggest difference in their response was that they're wanting an extra layer on the top, which means we're going to have to go another four or five inches below the surface with whatever is going to go right underneath, whatever the solution is, which means it is going to probably increase costs a little bit because now you've got an additional layer. But that's what they're going to require on certain areas of the field. Mr. Kelly. Mr. Kelly?
Tony, I spoke to Senator Fazio prior to this meeting. We spoke briefly at this topic. He has a meeting scheduled next week with the EEP and he wants to know if there's anything that we specifically want him to go over when he meets with them. Do we have something we can relay to him?
I mean, he's more than welcome to call if he wants. I can connect him, you know, with, with our firm that's working on it. But they really are working hard at the state level, I will say. We're very pleased with where we are right now because it devolves in our court to get the remediation plan back to the state. So, and obviously, they've been working on that. So that will go in. And then it's just a matter of the review before we can say, yes, you can get a shovel in the ground. They'll be reviewing our plan and whether or not they like it. But they've given us so much input, we know what needs to go in the plan.
Would you like him to give you a call or should I tell him you just go on the information he has now?
He's more than welcome to give me a call if he wants that latest update.
Thank you.
Okay, that's great news. Seems like hopefully we can see this in the next year would be a dream. Okay. With that, let's move to our next discussion item, overview of our planning and implementation. Thank you so much for putting all this detail together. 107 pages was very insightful of all the work we've done over the past year on this. So with that, Dr. Jones. Thank you. Of course, I'm not going to go through all 160 pages that's there for you to reference. But, you know, as Sean and I were working on this, we did recognize there, we have three board members that weren't here last summer. And so there was a lot of work that took place. And just from the timing perspective, this grant was worked on through June and July. And by federal requirements, we had to have this grant in by August. And the intent of the ARP grant funding for schools from the United States Department of Education was that we would be implementing in September that we were not supposed to sit on this all year long and be planning and have committees and do, we had to get the entire plan through 2024 submitted by August. So what you've got is just a basic timeline. And I've tried to put examples. We pulled the examples for you of the actual application that went in in August. And we have that there's town hall information. There's also some more online. There's actually a video you can watch that walks you through it if somebody wants more information. Obviously, we didn't put a whole lot of emails in here, but it just gave you an idea or flavor that was kind of what we've seen this week. Like on the high school, the student center, the emails we're getting, we got a lot last summer on this project, as I mentioned tonight. So again, this is a basic timeline. Mr. O'Keefe, I'm not sure if you are there and are able. He has been home ill. So do you want to just kind of quickly, Sean, start with your PowerPoint?
I will try. I'm kind of lost my voice, but I will do my best. So if you can go to page one, Mike. The next page. So this is the presentation that we gave to the BET. The Budget Committee as well as the full BET. The first chart is just a history of the four grants that we've received. The first is S R one for $758,000, which is, last year was fully appropriated and spent in full year '21. The coronavirus relief fund is 1.2 million, again, appropriated last year by the BET and fully spent in '21. S R two for 4.3 million. We appropriated and spent in full year '21, 2.7. The remainder was a subject of the meeting with the BET to fully appropriate and spend in full year '22, 1.6 million. And finally, the ARP for 9.6 million. So we have spent and/or committed these funds and budgeted these committees through full year '24, starting in full year '22, ending in '24. Next, next part, next chart. So this is the, you can just go all the way to the bottom. This is the, how we spent the, the S R one is predominantly for technology for students to facilitate remote learning, laptops, Chromebooks, and a small amount of teaching supplies. Again, fully appropriated last year and spent last year. Next page. So this is the coronavirus relief fund, 1.2 million. And you can see that we spent, you know, most of it on facility supplies and equipment as well as teaching and learning supplies. So that took care of, there's a lot of PPE in there, window barrier shields that we heard students didn't like earlier, teaching supplies and so on. Again, fully appropriated last year and spent last year. S R two, the total grant, as I mentioned, 4.3 million. We spent and appropriated last year, 2.7. And you can see the detail on how we spent the 2.7 million in full year '21. We had certified staff for ALP in the elementary schools, summer evaluations for special ed evaluations that were delayed due to COVID. So we got them done over the summer. Remote teachers. We also had some non-certified staff for police overtime for traffic and so on. Temporary custodians and also a significant amount of of technology that was used to facilitate remote learning, laptops, Chromebooks and so on. And also some facility supplies and as well as food service transportation in the summer of 2020. Next page. The request for the BET to appropriate, which they did, by the way, for 1.566 million. You can see the breakdown. It's predominantly for staff salary and benefits, including the five social workers that was mentioned significantly earlier today, as well as the math interventionists that have been a huge success. Also, 3.3 FTEs in ALP, which is an additional 0.3 FTE in each of the elementary schools. We had 0.7 in each of the elementary schools and we, we topped it off to a full 1.0. And then on top of that, the associated benefits allocated from the town. Next page. S R three, so the total grant is 9.6. And, and this was touched on earlier. The focus of the, can you go, can you go back? Yeah. The focus of the grant is transformation and at least 20% of the grant must be spent on learning loss. Transformation includes, you can, I'm not going to read them all, but family community connections, social, emotional, mental health and so on. Safe buildings, inviting spaces, healthy schools and so on. So that's, that's kind of the gist there. Next page. This chart is a, and there's more detail in the appendix, but this primarily addresses how the money is being spent or, you know, spent in full year '22 and how is projected to be spent, budgeted to be spent in full year '23 and '24. And you can see of the total 9.6 million in the lower writing in corner, 4.6 of it is for human resources. And, and you can see we, to incent substitutes to come to Greenwich, we, we raised our rate a little bit and provided an additional incentive to not only come to Greenwich, but to work consistently for us. And then there's the, you can read down the various FTEs and sped English teacher speech, assistive technology, PE, reading interventionist, math interventionist, teacher of math, psychology, social workers, ALP. And then the town allocation of benefits was tacked on as well. The, in terms of facilities and food services and teaching and learning, that's in the detail in the appendix. So we go there quickly. I'm quick, I'm quickly fading, guys. So this is, this is what's in the monthly financials package, these two charts for, for ARP. And you can see the top part is that same 4.6 million for human resources, followed by benefits. And then you can see below benefits, the detail of the facilities, we're spending money for disinfectant in full year '22. Media room redesign at the high school. PPE, container storage for storage of furniture that we weren't using or couldn't use because of social distancing. We also are doing a number of HVAC projects to improve the air quality. The student center redesign, which you heard a lot about earlier for 500, community connections. And then the 100,000 that was used to do the analysis at Central Middle School that precipitated, you know, all the things that are now going on there. And then again, the food services, meal delivery in, in the summer of '21. Next page. And then here is the teaching and learning. And you can see, I'm not going to go through every one of them because I don't think my voice will last that long, but we've provided additional descriptions off to the right, so that should help any, anyone to understand it better. I think I'll leave it there before I finally lose it.
Thank you, Sean. You sound horrible. So I'm going to turn this over to Christina Downey, who's chair of the Budget Committee, but going through this was even helpful. And then I had chaired the Budget Committee during that summer. And as a reminder, our Budget Committee is the only committee that actually has half the board on it. And it's always been bipartisan, two Republicans, two Democrats. We worked hard that summer with Dr. Jones and the administration. And then, of course, we went off and got all this feedback, which is helpful to see from the community, from the staff, from the students. And then I recall that as we met at the summer, we then sent this whole presentation to the board after our, sort of our July meeting. So it was good to go through this timeline, but let me turn this now over to Christina Downey, who's taking over the Budget Committee.
And that's, anyway, yeah, thanks, Kathleen. And thank you, Sean, for that. So I think what's really clear from these, you know, couple pages about the ARP is what you can really see is that that we, you know, half the money is going towards teaching and learning and professional costs, right? Part of this, there were adjustments when we had to put the town, asked the BETS us to put our allocation of benefits into this portion of it. That was an extra, you know, 400,000 for next year and 400 for the year afterwards. So we had 800,000 that originally was not necessarily, I'm sorry, we get the, the town allocation down. Yeah, it's about, you know, a little bit for every year. So it's 971,000, which was not originally part of this. I think, you know, you can see from the breakdown, the bold numbers, I know that other people ask questions. I think what I'm going to just ask, we've talked a lot about the student center tonight. Tony, I don't know if you'd like to address the community connection project, just so people are familiar with what that's involved?
Sharon, I know Stacy's online. Stacy, if I don't, oh, that's right, you're, you're live today. If I don't answer that, just let me know. And community connections is for our students who stay with us until the age of 22. And for a long time, they really didn't have a home. They, the program would move just to where we could find space. And now that we have them in the building, the one thing that, again, to Dr. Holly Gentolo, she's really focused on that aspect of our program. And they're putting in a curriculum, which we've really, we haven't had in the past. And part of that is also to make sure that, that the space itself has the components for young people who need to learn to live independently as much as possible. And the space right now really has had no investment. There, you know, they should be able to learn to cook. This is what you would normally see in some of these spaces where they're also looking at job-ready aspects. Stacy, if you, if you want to speak to it, you can. If you think that's enough? Yeah. You got to come up to the mic.
Can you hear me? There we go. So currently, the programs at the Millbake Building over by Julian Curtis. And the building is not set up for our students right now. So, for example, there's not enough electrical outlets to be able to plug in some of the appliances that we normally do, as Dr. Jones mentioned, for cooking. We realized during COVID that when students couldn't go out into the community, that we didn't have alternate activities for them to do. And so knowing that we have a continuum of student needs, and so it's not all about work, it's also developing life skills. We need to expand the options that we have available to our students.
I think if some of the people who have questions, why don't we have the board members pose their questions?
Ms. Costa? That's okay. You're on the Budget Committee, so.
So I see that we have under transformation on the RFSR three page, extended school days. Are we spending the school day for everybody or, you know?
So what you see on this page is how the money is supposed to be spent. And I'm trying to think. I don't, we definitely are not extending the school day for everybody. We could have had an after-school program though, that is part of this somewhere, but I can't even think of the after-school program. Most, most of it was summer programming. But this is just how you can spend the money and what the intent is from the United States Department of Education.
So I, I guess I have a few different questions, but I guess the one, just to understand this chart, is we, we heard a lot about the student center tonight. We certainly got a lot of emails this week about the student center. Could you talk about what, what the, the plan is and then, but also I'm confused because on this chart, it looks like it was already spent? So I just don't understand.
Certainly, I can speak to that. So this is a project where we wanted to put out actually an RFP to make sure that whoever was going to be working with the furniture design, that it was a competitive process. So we put out an RFP. We actually had four different proposals. We have narrowed down to the proposal that we believe is going to do exactly what the students have envisioned and the staff have envisioned. They had to present actually, you know, samples of furniture, what type, how do you get charging stations in a really big space that doesn't have a lot of outlets or it's not easy? So we've gone through all of that process. However, until I, I knew that the BET was going to make us go before the BET and I didn't want to assume on a project this large that something strange wasn't going to emerge. So we are ready to go on this. Once the appropriation is there, we'll get started immediately.
So that, that money hasn't been spent yet?
It has not been spent just because it was such a large dollar amount. We've gone through all of the process up to the point that we need the money so we can implement this for our students.
And then, so I think it might be helpful for us to back up. And I go, Cassie, this might be you. Might be helpful to clarify to the public exactly why we're having this conversation tonight. What we might be, we need to vote on something soon, so.
It's a very good point. So we do need to vote on, basically, the fiscal year '23. And I think we'll take that up after maybe next week. I want to talk to you about agenda planning. And then this year coming forward, we would do when the operating budget came before us, you know, in a year. So, but we do need to do that sooner. I'd like to do it before it goes back to the RTM. So I, you know, I'm going to add the, and ask for our schedules to see if we can meet in the next week. I was kind of hoping at one point to couple it with a C on a spec vote, but I think in our next conversation, we'll find that that's probably not right.
So then we don't have to vote on, on fiscal year '22, is what we're saying?
We don't have to, but I suggest we do.
Okay, so then we do have to vote on the, we will vote because the, because the high school student center is in fiscal year '22. So that's why, so we should be voting on that if we go on '22.
Correct. The BET suggested that we vote on '22, but they conditioned the appropriation for '23 upon a vote. But that, the money for fiscal year '22 and fiscal year '23 has been appropriated by the BET. But with the condition on the '23 that we take a vote on it with a suggestion for '22, very technical.
And that was to vote on Monday? I have more questions.
I think you're going to.
Okay, so all that said, so that we clarify as far as what the vote is and whatnot, that's good. So we heard a lot tonight about a lot of what sounds like really exciting work around what's going on with math interventionists and social workers and a lot of the real need that we know is out there from the pandemic. If it's true that we, this is something now that, which is great, you know, because as people know, this is something that I think it's important that we as a board talk about. If we're going to move towards that, a vote on approving these funds, I think it would be, it would be more than helpful to get a sense. I think it would be, it would be more than helpful to get a sense of quantifiably, you know, what kind of progress we're making. We know that we had some really stark challenges and some really stark data in last year's state results. We also know that we're not going to get those results again until next fall, which obviously is too late for for this vote. So how else can we be sure that what we're doing is working? I we heard tonight about Lincoln Data, the we heard about students making benchmarks. It'd be interesting to see how, what kind, what kind of metrics we can have, we have on students making that accelerated growth. I I don't want to be a stick in the mud. The I I love this, I I love the idea of re-doing the the Student Center. I I think these things are important. But as a board, we have to be sure that our core mission is is being attended to. They, and I think we need to look carefully at the metrics because we're only going to get these this money, as you can see, for another two years. So we have to be very clear as much as we can that the learning but loss is being remediated, that we're making accelerated growth and students on math and reading are are moving back up to the grade level before we get this, get to some other things. So I am curious as far as what data we might be able to get. I know we have a time crunch of things. But but I I personally am uncomfortable moving forward with with any vote until we we have some real better sense on on those metrics, if that makes sense.
Go ahead, Dr. Johnson. So I'm going to use the math interventionist as an example. You're going to get that data. It was in twenty twenty two, that money is spent. We have built it into the operating budget, the board's already voted on for next year. So going forward, it is something that's already in the budget. And when you look at any of these positions in twenty twenty two, they're all things that have already been implemented. The Student Center is unique, and I will say that is that is an area that we believe strongly, and I think you heard it tonight, that it's going to make a difference just in the social, emotional, and support for our students in the high school. And that it it's enormous. That's a that's a big focus for us, especially in that age group. And and we think that's the reason that's in here. And this concept started before we even knew we were going to have ARP and to be able to help with it because it bubbled up from students and from the administrators and staff. So that is, that's a unique one on here in comparison to the staff. But we will, as we always do, bring data to the board on how, and we hope we're going to see great results, not only in math interventionists, but just with the whole rollout of the new math program. We're hearing wonderful things and seeing Mike Reed still sitting there. And we had a discussion just last week, you know, I was trying to find where the goal was that happened. And it was back, and I believe we found it was twenty fifteen. Karen Hertz, I mean, sent and sent it to me, she knew where to find it, about the percentage of students, for instance, in eighth grade algebra. Are we still trending in the right direction? Because that's been around, and we are, which was, I'm going to have, I think, some really good data to share with the board.
I could just ask one thing. I remember when this first came announced in the Budget Committee, and I kind of bumped at the whole idea to overdoing a Student Center because it seems like such a large amount of money. And then I listened to the students and the surveys and the experts, perhaps now that I have a student there. And then just some of the stories about how, well, look, I mean, it's older than me. So, um, I think that, and, you know, I'm not as young as Cody, but, um, so I think that it's it's probably time to to change and maybe address some of, and and the other thing I liked about it, frankly, is that every student goes to the high school, right? And so that that feels good, too, that you're going to actually transform the labs for, you know, twenty eight hundred students. But that's just my plug for why I also am like, I I've sort of turned on that. I had the sort of same reaction initially. Ms. Costa?
Just one more plug for the Student Center project because I don't believe the Student Center currently meets the needs of all students. And it's really critical, I think, for their, you know, for their health and well-being to have a a space that meets their needs. If you've seen it, it could use a lot of work.
Joe?
Yeah, give it the microphone. For all the reasons, they are the to be, well, in a way, the devil's advocate here, just looking at it a different way, Student Center. The would we have allocated resources to the Student Center if not the federal money, not the ARP funds? Would we, where do we think that would happen? Are there other priorities ahead of that? This is unique funding, I understand that. And I want, people are looking at it from a different perspective, so please address that.
I think there's a reason why it hasn't been done since the seventies, truly. I think if you go back over the last couple of years where we tried to have even just furniture, regular furniture in the budget, it gets cut because we have guidelines that we are held to. And granted, the guidelines the last couple of years have been a little bit higher, where we're at least covering our contracted costs. But this money is meant, it's exactly what the U.S. Department of Education meant with this funding. It is not supposed to supplant things or, you know, just to take something off of our budget. It's supposed to be trans, you know, transformational. And I think this is a perfect project that needs that. And would I be able to, or like with Sean, I'd be able to build this into the budget? With the current budget on it, it would be incredibly, incredibly difficult.
Thank you.
Ms. Downey?
Yeah, I just want to kind of follow up to kind of tangling to Michael Justice's question. I think the fact that we're putting such a huge amount of it into education, educational issues, maybe you can say about how we're measuring it, but I think I feel good about that. I think also the fact that we're trying to incorporate those things as long-term budget items by, you know, as we have perhaps, you know, fewer classroom teachers, we can put the math interventionists into our operating budget, indicates to me that these are things we feel are worthwhile and we want to be doing and help our students, that we don't want to just simply do it for three years and then cut it off. I think is indicative of it as a priority for our students.
And if I could just add to that, that's one of the things I know we talked about when I was on the Budget Committee, and I know you've continued, is the funding clip. We're all very much aware of what happens when a grant goes away. And so I know that Sean, Dr. Jones, and the committee have spent a lot of time talking about how you're going to work, what what works into our ongoing operating budget.
What was the origin of the five hundred thousand number? I was just thinking about, like, I just Googled it, but an acre is, I think, forty four thousand square feet or something close to that. And so it's like a little more than ten dollars a square foot for renovating. I don't know, Joe, you're a builder, can you do anything for ten dollars a square foot? Like, how, I was just trying to get a context of what can actually be done with that money and how it was sized.
It's very much driven by actually, the design would probably be a better word, redesign through furniture in those aspects, not a renovation, we're going to knock down walls. That's the big difference. And from seeing the proposals that we did receive, not to exceed them out, and we look at how they got planned for the space. It's, I think it's going to do exactly what we needed to do. But it really was trying to be thoughtful about how much can we invest from ARP? How much does furniture generally cost? And furniture can be expensive because this furniture has to be school-grade, it has to be able to last. Yeah, I mean, it's, you know, they're tough on the furniture. So we feel like it's going to be able to do what we need.
So also a calculation, sorry, calculation on cubic foot versus square foot, or cubic foot in open spaces, different than square foot, so. Isn't too asking.
Karen?
So I just, I have a couple of questions. So based upon the the package of materials and the timeline. So from the timeline of what was submitted, the the PowerPoint, press the, it was a high-level PowerPoint presentation that was distributed in, I believe, July, that is different than what was actually submitted to the state. And then it seems that what has been actually submitted to the state is, and and Tony, I think you've said this yourself, the application that was submitted to the state is really difficult to read. In fact, it's somewhat incomprehensible as to what we put in here. But, um, the issue that I was addressing is, you know, things keep evolving. So from a matter of, you know, how we're spending S R three, when do you envision that stopping, right? It's slightly, it's different from the proposal in July, it's different than what we've submitted to the state, and the numbers have differed from month to month occasionally. I think the biggest change was obviously the benefits piece. But do you envision this plan changing anymore over the course of time?
If you go back to the very, we presented, and I think it went to the board July thirtieth last summer, and you look at that, you'll notice most of the items are actually almost identical to what they are now. What you see that will change is when I look at twenty three and we're going to have, let's say, it's, um, you know, a speech teacher or that one math interventionist, I really don't know, is that teacher going to be a hundred and twenty eight thousand? Or are we going to have a ninety thousand dollar teacher? So this, and we've known this from day one, and the state knows that we have to go in and update this periodically as we get the actual and actual expenses. And that and that will continue all the way up into twenty four. And, you know, and the benefits did cause a big change in that we did not, we would, we did not have the benefits in here. So that caused shifts for not only two, but three. So there are some shifts between just where they follow the grant. And sometimes, you know, we could have, let's say, a C C technology person next year, and the person is eighty thousand. That's where I have to work with Dr. Holly Gantalo, and she oversees IDA grants. She may end up putting part in the IDA, part on, uh, even ARP. So yes, there are going to be changes all the way up through twenty four.
And then how does that work with the state?
They, we have to request that they open that application back up. Now, we have to go in, make eligible edits, it has to be things that they approve. Once we do that, they go in and approve it again. And generally, you know, most of this, again, are, it's not changing the item because they do make sure it fits in the right bucket. It's really changing the dollar amount if we have, if we're updating for the actual. And sub incentive, for instance, I'm sure we won't have a lot left, but if we had some left in seventh century, we might want to adjust that and move it to next year where we only have a hundred and twenty thousand because we have less. So we would open the application, but we can't open it, they have to open it for us.
Okay. Going to the twenty percent learning loss, there's a lot, obviously, there are certain things that are obviously fall within there. But from a state perspective, for example, in adding three and a half sped teachers and sped assistants, and then also in connection with other aspects of this, when we're talking about, you know, curriculum support, what portions of this count to that twenty percent of learning loss?
Yeah, we're considered way over that. And as a matter of fact, I was looking, there's some, an actual visualization that the Connecticut Finance Project has where they pull straight from the grant program. And if you look at that, we're sitting somewhere between, it doesn't have the exact percentage, but you can tell because it's broken down into the four buckets that they're holding us accountable to for ARP. And we're around sixty percent.
Where is this?
I can send the link, it's it's a Connecticut Finance Project.
And it shows our piece of this and what it looks like. So for example, it's off the top, I would say, adding three and a half sped teachers is in response to our P, you know, PCG coming out and giving us our twenty eight recommendations of things to do, which was one prior to COVID. But is that, does the state consider that something that is attributable to learning loss? Because I would attribute that to dealing with our ongoing issue in revamping our special ed program as a compared to learning loss for all across the district.
No, I mean, the the state looks at it because where we need needed those teachers, we're bringing pace loads down, trying to be more intensive and in having the staff or students. That's not the PCG piece, as you know, built into our operating budget going into next year. So this is over and above to really be targeted.
And then I guess my overall, sorry, so. So one thing that I think would be overall helpful, right, is trying to just understand based upon the information that was attained from the community, which it was helpful to see for the first time, some of that input that was received that was in this package is what was said. But given the money that we've had, what hasn't been put down on paper is, in in words, right, is what is the strategic plan? Like, when you got, when you envisioned this money, you put it into various buckets and you were looking at it, what was your strategic plan? What were your goal? What is the goals that you intend to achieve with this money? And how would you measure those goals and whether or not we were successful?
So first of all, it's taking the input from, I I think some of the most valuable input is the people that are out with our children. And and when you look at this, that's what you, that's what you see reflected. And I think that's why you had the principals here speaking tonight about social workers and math interventionists and, you know, what they need for their buildings. I think the parent input supported what's in this grant as well. And when you look at the, some of the survey results and the numerous emails, I don't even know how many we got last summer, but it was a lot. Also supported exactly what's in here. And I think the goal is making sure that we were utilizing the money as much as we could to support the academic excellence, to be able to help coming out of COVID because there were a a lot of challenges and and we're still facing them. So I think we measure the success, number one, by where we are today. I mean, compared to a lot of districts where we are right now, we should be extremely proud of what we've accomplished. And I I I think our results will continue to show that. So that, to me, is one measure.
Okay, so, but what is that measure? For example, if we were to look at measuring loss, so Mike talked earlier about the fact that at the beginning of the year, we had a series of schools that were well below, where we needed to be on both math and reading. And so my question more goes to, we are putting interventionist both from a literacy and mathematics component. So how are we going to measure that that money was well-spent and that we actually got the result we were looking for? And that's what I'm not understanding from you.
It's where it's where students start at the beginning of the year and where they end. And we have multiple triangulated triangulated data that we use for that. And there, you know, we're very focused on that. So I I think, you know, and you heard some of the administrators reference that tonight. I think Jill mentioned it from her building, just really looking at where her kids started, how many were in intervention, how many are no longer in intervention. There are all types of data points that that our schools, because we have wonderful staff out there that really use that up.
So when are we going to get, when are we going to get to see that information?
I generally, the board sees it in the fall, every fall.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I guess that's where this is a a curious timeline because I know we generally see all the state view in the fall. I think I I would argue that this might be a time to, for us to recheck and see. We don't have SBA testing, but we have all this, just what what Dr. Jones said. We've been doing benchmarks and growth measurements all year. So we certainly have a sense, and the administrators talked about it tonight, about tracking students and their growth over the year. So if there's a way for us to get a macro sense of are students making standard growth? Are they making accelerated growth? Because we only have this money for for a few years. They, and what we don't want to be is, we don't want to be in a period where in two years from now, where students continue on a standard growth trajectory and they're still behind. The, I know we know all that, the, I think, from what I'm hearing, and I don't mean to be be critical, from what I'm hearing, I mean, it sounds like we have a plan. And I suspected from what everybody said tonight, it sounds like there are many aspects of that plan that are terrific. I think we need to see, we need to see evidence of how the plan is working. Specifically, if we're going to commit continued funds to that, it gives us a chance to pause and see, is this working? Do we have to reallocate or move things different ways? They, we heard tonight, the, we did hear, you know, one, one comment from one school say that, you know, we have a point five silver worker, we need one, we need a full-time one. We heard another comment about expanding math interventions. So I'm sure there's need out there, and I think it's a, it's it's not appropriate. I know we've got time crunches, and I know we've got RTM and things. But our core mission of supporting kids, particularly where we've got elementary schools, where more than, you know, we've got grade levels where significant numbers of students reading below grade levels and where we can see where accelerated growth is and where it is. And I think that's incumbent upon us as a board to look at.
I understand. How quickly, though, I mean, you're an educator, I think about it in business. If I go to a plan, I don't expect to see the turnaround in less than a year, and we're talking nine months here, right? So when you invest and you put in math, I mean, I've seen in ALP, for example. So I've seen it there, special education and math and reading. When you do the investment, we now have just, you know, eight months of of data. Um, you know, I I mean, I I guess I'll turn it back to Dr. Jones, but I'm just thinking more philosophically. You then need to see the information. I know that I take the final test in June. Are you timing me? Because I don't have to go along with you.
Because I don't have to go along with you. But, so I do think that it'd be important to, I, I agree, to see the data, I know, I feel like my kids are always taking tests, so certainly, um, it's important to see that. But I also would think kind of how the grant would work is that, you know. We would see the data, you know, next fall, turns out math interventionists are working great, let's work them into our operating budget. Turns out reading's not, kids still can't read, we have to come up with a different plan, let's not work that into the operating budget. I mean, am I being foolish or is that how you look at it? So just, just for full clarity, we already have reading interventionists in the operating budget, and we have for a while. We just didn't have math at elementary. Next year, we have built it into the operating budget. I know it seems like a long time ago, we discussed it way back in like December, but that's already in our operating budget, so you'll, you will get that in the fall. We'll continue to watch that and see how our math program is doing, but. It sounds to me like, I mean, the, the only thing on here you're really, I think, questioning would be social workers, because. We have, we do not have those in the operating budget, um, as of today. And I know that I've had certain board members ask me, like, how, what do they actually do? And I think, you know, we do need to do a good presentation of what that looks like. Um, as far as the things on the top of this chart, like, um, special education assisted technology. You'll notice in twenty-four, it's not there, that has to be in the operating budget. Uh, we didn't have that position and we have to have it, uh, we weren't meeting the needs of children, so. Uh, like at point one P E, that was really a COVID addition for like a small section. So there really isn't much on here, I, I'm going to say that's really debatable. In the sense of the only kind of new or different, um, going forward is the social worker for F Y twenty-three. And I, and I think it would be great, at the end of the year, to give, do a really good report. About what, you know, what is all of the work that's taken place, and, uh, P T As have some really good questions about that as well. Um, but it's hard to support students when we don't have elementary counselors, we don't have social workers. And we, we know what we're seeing, and I, I know, um, Dr. Mike, that you're seeing it probably in New York as well, right? Um, it's, it's really difficult for kids coming out of COVID, and we have to have support in our elementary schools. So, and you know, we may need to refine how we use positions systemically across the district, we continue to do work with that. But we needed this position before COVID. All right, Jones, since we're waiting.
What I'm hearing, I think I'm hearing anyway, and I sort of agree with it, is we need a progress report before we get our report card. Because basically, we have to make a decision, and if we're going to be comfortable making a decision voting to be affirmative. And we certainly have to have at least some data, we understand the, and I can't get the report cards or progress report, I think I'm hearing that, and I certainly support that concept.
Uh, it's hard to do that, we really need to vote like next week, and we need to keep in mind, the people in twenty-two are under contract. The people in twenty-three are going to get their contract on June first. And this has been a big discussion point where people don't understand the timeline. And that's why it goes from the U S Department of Education, it went to the Connecticut Department of Ed. It's flows straight to the school, because we have a totally different timeline, um, than the A R P money for like a municipality. So it is, it is challenging, because the people that are on here have to be contracted, or we lose people. And, and the ones that we're, we're keeping, obviously, um, it's June first is when we start handing it out. I mean, maybe we could have Mark talk about some of the successes, I mean, I feel that. We've heard a lot from the principals tonight about why it's working, and I don't want to dismiss all of that feedback, especially as we, I do think it's important that we. And maybe, I'm sorry, I guess he's sick as well. Okay, lovely, all right, Ms. Constance.
What about our students who take the STAR tests? They take a fall and a spring, and how fast do we get this?
I don't think, BJ might be better to answer that, actually, um, what data we have right now.
We do have the data from, uh, fall, winter and spring, um, but that's only on the reading side of things, that really is not a part of this discussion.
Why not?
They haven't taken the spring yet, and that funding wasn't geared towards the literacy specialists, it was more towards the math and trendedists.
I'm a little concerned that we're getting kind of sucked into a rabbit hole on data. Um, because if we're really talking about the money for next year, if that's what we're really talking about, um, I think you gotta really look at the breakdown. Um, look at the human resource, I mean, look at the numbers, the human resources, you know, you've got certain positions. We can disagree or agree with those positions, but that's really what we're talking about. Um, the, the social workers being obviously a substantial chunk of it, I don't think any of us really have a debate about social workers. Um, we have, that's about four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. We have almost four hundred thousand dollars in our incremental A O P. On staff, I don't think we have a huge divergence of opinion on that. But accompanying those is also four hundred thousand dollars of benefits, which go with them. Um, so we're, we're, you know, and just, I'm concerned with parsing, I mean, I, I don't disagree that we would like metrics. And we want information, and I think one of the reasons we added an extra board meeting in October was to have a really robust discussion. About, um, the, the enrollment and the, um. Testing data, because I think we felt they could cut short change by trying to squeeze into a meeting. So I think we will have an opportunity when we have a really full picture. But I think these partial pictures of like cherry picking a little data on this test and a little on this. I ju- I just don't think that's a productive use of board time, I don't think it's productive to ask our staff to generate a bunch of reports. Just to make us feel really better, I think it's more important that we look at the numbers in the detailed chart and say. Do I have a fundamental objection with any of these particular items? And if I do, it's kind of in the speak now or forever hold your peace category to me, um, looking at the twenty-three numbers. So that, that to me is the way to do the analysis, but that's one person.
Yeah, I think, um, well, there's an interesting article in the Wall Street Journal this week about a lot of school districts failing to spend this money at all, I think because of some of the logistical challenges that. Um, you're talking about, and obviously it's unfortunate that it doesn't line up well, but I think you guys have done a great job of at least. Getting it to work, because it would be worse if we weren't spending any of it. I think, um, if it's perhaps not feasible to have any of the data. Uh, it's probably worth at least, you know, when you're, it's not debatable or whatever, it, it's. My hope is that when we do get the data, even if it's not available now. We'll take it very seriously if the data doesn't line up with the qualitative assessment we're hearing, because it sounds like we're hearing across the board, people saying. This is having a real impact, this is extremely, you know, um, uh, important for us, so I just. For memory purposes, if it takes till the fall, if there, if the data doesn't support that, I think we have to then say, whoa. Uh, we have a serious issue of people being able to assess things, and I think that would call into. Um, question the degree of confidence we can have in statements like that in the future. Hopefully it all works out really nicely, I just wanted to flag that as like, I think. A reasonable approach from a governance standpoint, especially if we can't do anything in advance because of these logistical hurdles that are holding up a lot of other school districts.
Good point.
I have a separate question on something not related to the H R stuff, but we're done with that.
Still on our?
Yes.
Okay, then, fine, yeah.
Can someone, what, the school climate consultant, I. The, the description says, "learning for staff to support students in crisis," I just wasn't, can someone tell me a little bit more about what that is? I know it's not.
Can you show me where that is?
Big dollars, but.
You find it?
It's in the middle on the teaching.
It's on the detailed page under teaching and learning.
Seventy-nine hundred, that, that one, seventy-nine hundred and thirty-five.
It's eighty thousand bucks over three years.
Yeah, there you go, right here.
Or if you want to email it.
Yeah, I want to, I want to double check, I think that that is actually the high school line, uh, for professional development that they've been doing, but, um, I want to double check that before I commit to that.
Cool.
Okay, seeing nothing else, we do, at the end, when we do agenda planning, we'll talk about, want to bring this back. Um, so with that, we move to.
Actually, Kathleen, I'm so sorry, can I ask one more?
Of course.
Is there, is there, um, an argument to be made that we should be taking some of the money from some of these markets and making it available for substitute teachers? Feel like that's something that I continue to hear about as an issue, uh, either that they're underpaid or having more, um. More full-time subs available, it, it feels like that was particularly impacted by COVID, I don't know if it's worth considering.
That, that's that very first line is how we're getting through it, like this year with the sub incentive, and it's on the A R P line for twenty-two?
I'm so sorry, I completely missed that, and I just remembered we talked about that in the budget meeting, so. That was a space gap.
No, but it's a good point, because subs have kind of gotten us through, incentive pay has gotten us through with so many people, like, I mean, it seems like half the people that have a M I R S. So I can imagine what the high school looks like.
Actually, sorry, Tony, I, I know, we talked about this, but the substitute pay was only modestly increased, right? It was like the fifty, this is the fifty dollar stipend for five days. Yeah, so I'm sorry, my question should have been, should we be doing more in that area, is that sufficient?
So what, what I want to do is, you'll notice in twenty-three, I just have a hundred and twenty thousand that we could plug in there, it's not a lot. Um, but I really want to go back and look in exactly what is our actual for the sub incentive. Again, that's one where I don't know how many people are going to be out over the next, you know, twenty-five days. Um, and so we want to go in and really analyze that number, when we get ready to build the operating budget. I do believe it's something that going forward, we are going to have to address, and we need to be competitive in the market. Um, because e- everyone across the country, people are seeing sub shortages, and I think our incentive. Has made an enormous difference, because you're right, I mean, normally it's a hundred and ten dollars a day. And it's not easy work, um, you know, and I think you pointed out it was less than McDonald's. It's per hour, was it?
Yeah, it's fifteen seventy an hour, which you could get at a fast food place.
So with the incentive pay, uh, you know, we've been able to make it where it's much more lucrative for people to come and sub for us, and, and that needs to be a long-term solution. Uh, to recruit and retain ourselves. And McDonald's doesn't have bats.
McDonald's has chicken McNuggets, which is better than fifteen seventy.
I think we're losing it, um, that is, any, anything else before I move to C M S and specs on this topic? Okay, thank you very much, okay, so C M S. All right, yes, Ed Specs, Dr. Jones, and what is the, if the first question is, what is the difference from what we all saw last week? Okay, so I'm going to, uh, quickly turn it over to our consultants, to Fran and Roger, uh, Tom Healy is also elevated if, if you have school-based questions. The, uh, copy that you had sitting out is the one you should be using, not the one inside the blue packet, this one was just updated this afternoon. And our consultants are gonna, um, just kind of verbally let you know, uh, what changes, um, have been made. After gaining staff input, which I believe Mr. Kelly was able to listen to, uh, some of the staff input. Also, they took all of the comments, um, that the board had submitted as well. So, um, Fran and Roger, I'll turn it over to you.
Uh, thank you, Dr. Jones. Um, my name is Roger LaFleur, and I'm here with Fran D'Fiore. Excuse me?
I just said hello, everyone.
I thought I heard that. Um. Uh, first off, I want to thank everyone that contributed with their comments and questions, uh. Set them into, uh, Tom and Dr. Jones, because, uh, they were very helpful and very insightful, and it, it really helps when you have a, a, a large set of eyes. Uh, looking over, uh, documents such as these, because they pick up a lot of things that we sometimes just glance over and don't pick up on, so. Uh, it was very helpful information, and Fran and I spent, uh, quite a few hours processing. The questions and developing responses and answers and making changes to the Ed Specs. What I can tell you at this point is, uh, after, uh, we had a discussion both with Tom and Dr. Jones. Uh, because there was a, a, a series of, uh, common requests, uh, and it really centered around additional space in certain areas. And we felt more comfortable if we had a talk with the administration about how to handle that, so we, we, we consulted with them and got some really important feedback. And it made some of those changes. So we've, basically what we did was we looked at some of the spaces that were questioned as to whether they were truly needed. Uh, and we thought if they're not, and we can reallocate that space to areas where people are saying they would could use additional space. That was probably in the best interest of the project. So what I can tell you at now, as one of the big questions that came up was the computer lab. And, uh, questions that kept coming up was if we are one-to-one with computer, uh, devices with students one-to-one, uh, do we really need a dedicated computer lab? And, um, I think it was decided that at this point, what better use of that space could be made? Uh, by putting it into some of the other areas that, uh, had been requested for additional space. Um, another area that, uh, was brought up and talked about was the health classroom. Um, and this room also was decided that we really didn't need a dedicated health classroom. We could get by, uh, with that class being instructed within, um, a, a regular classroom. Um, because what happens in, in, in the school, you'll have. Well, I think there's twenty-four or so classrooms that are not fully occupied all the time, so if you look at the school schedule. Some of those classrooms, in fact, most of those classrooms will be available at some point during the day. And as a result of that, that health class can be taught in one of those rooms, so it's making use of existing space and not wasting additional space that could be utilized in other areas better. So those two spaces were, uh, basically eliminated, and we also ended up, uh. Putting more space in than the original, uh, document had. Uh, so I think the overall square footage has grown up to a little over a hundred and four thousand. Um, some of the areas that were reallocated, uh, started with the media center, we heard a lot of concerns about the media center. Especially the reading and the stack section not being large enough. And when we investigated this, we found that there's an intention to have approximately ten thousand books in there, so. We ended up increasing the media center by about five hundred square feet, uh, in, in that particular section. Also, the resource rooms, uh, which get a lot of use and are important. Uh, were, were sized at four hundred, and there was a request to see if we could make those larger, so we added a hundred square feet to them as well. Um, the other areas that we heard that we thought were tight because they're existing and they're pretty much that, uh, size now. Were the chorus, the orchestra and the band rooms, so though they each got a hundred square feet. The fitness room, which is, uh, uh, adjacent to the gym, was also increased, and that was increased by four hundred square feet. Um, and then the, I think the, uh, on, in fact, the life skills room, which is part of this special ed program, that was also increased by two hundred square feet. I think that's a, a, an important one, because the life skills has a lot of appliances in there, it, it's just going to get, uh, too crowded if they. If they, uh, don't have that additional space. Um, the other area that got really a, 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 a good chunk of space was the auditorium and stage, because we keep, we've heard from many, many people. That they really like the auditorium and the stage the way it is, so we basically decided to match the existing size. So we increased that significantly. Um, there were a lot of other minor changes, um, such as, uh, in fact, there, some of the formatting inconsistencies, which. I don't know which board event number, but, uh, got them, but I really appreciate it, because, uh, we were able to make, I was able to make a lot of those. Ironically though, as I'm looking the document over, the one that you got tonight, I still see a few more, so I. This is a working document, it's in progress, and, uh, sooner or later, we're going to get them all, uh, we hope to have the final draft in front of you in about two weeks. Um, the other minor changes were things like, uh, they, there was a request for the whiteboards to be all, be, um. A magnetic whiteboard, so we made those changes. Um, they also asked for like higher ceilings in the gym area, um, because they could utilize more storage if they could go vertical. Um, they also, there was a request for soundproof booths. That could they be in the classrooms, the world language classrooms, so that the teachers can work, uh, individually with students without disrupting the rest of the class, so we included those. So in closing, I would encourage you to continue to send your comments and your observations and questions to Dr. Jones and Tom. Uh, because, uh, uh, they'll get them to us, and we'll continue to work on this till we get this document, uh, the way everybody wants it. Um, do you have any questions now?
Ms. Constance? So I just wondered how big the media center is currently. And whether the now increased space gives us at, at least, you know, what we have, and. I, I have been told that we have a lot more books than ten thousand, I, I think I've been told. Where I've heard the number, um, is closer to eighteen thousand. I, I think I've been told, or I've heard the number is closer to eighteen thousand books. And so I just wonder if we have enough. I don't know where the other books are going, have enough storage.
We, we heard the average was, they said around ten thousand. So what we can do is we can double check that. We'll find out if additional space is needed. We can make, we can make some changes to it.
All right, Joe.
Thank you. I have first big comment and a number of questions. I have the pleasure of being able to watch the central middle school teachers brainstorming concepts and ideas about what the new building should have. Some of our best resources are certainly the teachers right now to tell us what they need and what they want to have in the new building. They were, they were being heard is what they said to me. They were enthusiastic and they were very excited. And that's what I went there and wanted to see. And I'm very happy that I saw that. So thank you, Tom, for inviting me into, to me to talk to those people doing the brainstorm. Questions I have, I was at a political meeting last night and I kept being asked multiple times the same question. I thought it was a little strange, but they, some of the people wanted to know about the bathrooms. If you could just explain the bathrooms that we're putting in and, and what we required to put in versus what we're choosing to put in. So if you could please just go over that to just answer the questions of those people who asked me that.
So that came up a lot to Fran and I while we were interviewing the staff. I mean, so much so that when the next group of people came in, we would, we would, you know, jokingly say, we know about the bathrooms. Okay, because apparently the school, when it was designed, was designed with insufficient facilities for, for that. In the last twenty, thirty years, codes have changed pretty dramatically and buildings are, they're calculated and occupancy levels. So when the occupancy level of the school is determined, it will be prescriptive as to the minimum amount of facilities they must have. So then the other issue comes down to distribution. So we leave a lot of that up to the architects and engineers. So what I can tell you for sure is that the new facility will have sufficient bathrooms for students, for staff and the public. And they will make sure that they get located strategically where they're going to be needed the most. But I can't tell you what the count is right now. All I can tell you is that it will meet the code and, and it may in fact even exceed the code, but it cannot be below the code.
I think it was.
And they also will be much larger than what you're seeing in terms of, there were questions about the sizes of the stalls and obviously these will be ADA compliant. It will not look, the bathrooms will not physically look like what the bathrooms look like now.
I think the questions were more related to the category of bathrooms. There were many questions relating to that. And I think it was more, I was kind of, what we're required to have as far as bathroom categories and what we're choosing to have as far as bathroom categories.
Not sure I follow, quite frankly. I mean, there's men's room and there's women's rooms.
I'll say.
I mess up these things usually.
There are, there are a set of number of bathrooms designated as boy bathrooms, girl bathrooms and non-binary bathrooms. The question that we're getting, including the question that I was getting, Joe was trying to get to, and I was asked last night as well is, why do we have three non-binary bathrooms?
Oh, okay. Um, if, if we many times when we did our development educational specifications, we, we we go by grade level. So we figured there'd be one for sixth grade, one for seventh grade, one for eighth grade.
My question is, what are we required as far as non-binary bathrooms versus what we're choosing to put in? I guess that's, I was just answered that question. I really didn't know that. That's why I'm asking it because I don't want to be left without an answer. So if you can.
Okay, let me, let me, we'll do some research and we can get you an answer on that.
Thank you. My next question is related to a career in technical education. I was very happy to see a wood shop included in there. I'm basically a white collar, a blue collar guy in a white collar world, I suppose. And I do say that, and I did ask some questions to some experts about this, this topic, about why not expand other than just wood shop, plumbing, electricians, the trades. What is the trend for middle schools and having the opportunity to teach our kids the ability to take care of their own homes, to, to possibly look at the professions of the trades where there's a big shortage as far as I'm concerned right now. And there's certainly a lot of money to be had there. I told, I'm told the trend is moving away from that. What is the, the trend as far as having the trades taught in middle schools?
Well, obviously, um, there's always been, typically in a middle school, you'll see, as long as they have someone certified to do it, they'll have a wood shop. Um, and then a lot of times now they're going more with a technical look where they're having more robotics and computers and coding and that type of tech ed. With regard to the actual trades, with like, with regard to like plumbing and electrical, usually students who choose to pursue that are usually going to a trade high school. The technical high schools, if they're interested in that. But typically the tech ed component, the hands-on is mostly woods. And then it goes towards more of a computer and more of a coding, more of a robotics type or a video production type setting. And I think part of that too has to do with safety as well and has to do with the layout is, is also in terms of spacing.
Thank you. I'll let somebody else ask questions now.
Ms. Downey? Um, thanks. Just quick before I start. Tony, is the version you gave us that we're working on that's most current, is that on board docs now or no? Or can we get it up for members of the public to be sure? Yes, we will get it up there. I don't believe, I, I actually Mike can answer that. Let's let him.
I, I posted it right after you gave it to me, Tony, and then I informed the board of the same.
Okay, that was the one that was at like five o'clock today, Mike? Okay, it's the fourth draft. Okay. Okay, so a couple of quick questions. We had talked about requesting a chart of kind of current building size and breakdown versus the projected. Are we going to be able to get that in kind of relatively short order or waiting for another draft? I don't know. Kind of what's the plan for that?
Uh, that is something that we're still working on. A little bit of the problem is that some of the data that we have on existing doesn't take into account circulation space. So it's hard to, it's hard to calculate the total square footage if I don't have a good reference to the corridor and circulation areas. So I, but that may have to be actually.
It'll be helpful for all of us to know, even if, even if the hallways are hard and that's the one item that you're not sure about. I'd rather have more information and say if we don't have the hallways than. The other question I had is, we had talked a lot about state reimbursement and enrollment in our last meeting. And I wanted to just hear, you know, you said you increased the size of the building a little bit. And I know that the auditorium is a little oversized for state reimbursement. But where do, if we say that five eleven is the enrollment number, because I think we saw the projections and looks like that would be the number unless we have a nice little bubble next year. Where does the size of this building sit vis a vis where we are state reimbursement wise? Do you know any sense?
Yeah, I, right now, I haven't done the final calculation because the, the building keeps changing a little bit. But right now I'd say that it's approximately fifteen thousand square feet over. And I'll, I'll have to confirm that when we get the final number.
You're going to chuck it. That's going to be the auditorium. So right, that just, if, if the rest of the building is okay, except for the auditorium.
Well, no, the, no, I think it, there's, the entire building, most of the program contributes to the, to the oversize. But you're right, the auditorium is the lion's share of it. But there's other contributing factors. Most, many schools only have a chorus and a band. A lot of them don't, you know, they don't have an additional orchestra room. So there's things like that that, that contribute to the size.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I think my question was just answered, but I just want to make sure because we, I didn't, I knew we got the, a new report this week, I think on the enrollment studies. And I wanted to know whether or not that report of impacts the five hundred and eleven number in this report. It's consistent. Okay. I wasn't sure how to read that one together. And then additional questions that I have been getting, and I don't know if they were answered in the word document that had been floating around or that had been asked. But, and this point, this may be a question for, for you. Central middle schools, it defines their, their core value in this, this piece concept. Is that new to the school? Or am I just late to the game? What page four? It's different than the school norms that all schools have. And I was just curious as to, is this something new for central middle school?
I, you want me to jump in, Tony? So I, I can answer that Karen. So about three years ago, we engaged in a process where we solicited feedback from our parents, our students and our staff to kind of just zero in our focus a little bit more on what we at Central were striving to achieve. And we did a series of questions and some focus groups and things like that. And so in addition to the district norms that we still use and are part of our full value contract, there were just a few items that came up in, in those conversations. And those words, the, became the PACE acronym, were the ones that really actually kept coming back to us in our feedback. So that was the, I think it was the eighteen, nineteen school year was when we sort of pulled that together. So that was just a way for us to kind of take what we already were looking at under the vision of the graduate and the, and the district norms and zero in a little bit more closely to what we were doing at Central. So that was where that came from. And when Fran and Roger were sort of asking about our educational planning, I just shared that with them. But that was solicited through feedback from both parents, students and the staff a couple of years ago.
Thanks, Tom. So one of the questions that I actually have been continuing to get, and it might just be helpful. And I think overall, there, there seems to be a difference between definitions of equity and equality. And I don't know if you're processing going through this, is if you define those, those terms. Because I think some people are having, they're, they're curious and they'd like to understand what you mean between equity. Because equity and equality are two different things and they're interpreted as different. And I know that equity right now is, is particularly can be deemed as a buzzword. So I was just curious, along with these definite, this piece concept, which I'm very interested in, whether or not in those conversations, you defined what the school meant by equity.
Yes, and definitely from the time that this was developed a couple of years ago. And now obviously that word has become more and more prevalent in conversations. But at the time, really what, what the word came up was just related to student needs. And basically just looking at the fact that students have different needs and what are we doing to identify those needs and, and address those needs? And just how do we do that in our school day? So that was really the, the very basis of, you know, from language needs to learning needs. You know, what is it that we're doing to ensure kids have a, a successful experience in school based on who they are as individuals?
Got it. Thank you. That makes sense. And I think that's very helpful. Appreciate it, Tom.
Question about the, the library, because I know we just got this, the, last time we talked about the library still of being kind of like the hub, or the media center being the hub of the school. Are we still seeing it that way in, in this draft and the maker space? Is that, is that still there?
Absolutely. The makers, the maker space is still there. And, and we, we also call out for some of the related arts to be associated in proximity with the media center so that there could be collaboration. It's going to be a very dynamic area.
And I know we, we submitted, we had a question doc last week, the submitted, I didn't know. Well, we haven't gotten that yet.
I'm sorry, what? You, you submitted a question last week?
Yeah, it's in the, it's within the aspect, right?
Yes.
Yes, so the question should have been revised. You all received, right, Roger, you received the questions, the Google doc from the board?
Yes, we did. Yeah, Fran and I did. We went over them. And I think we wrote responses to them. I think we submitted them back.
Oh, well, we didn't get that.
We'll look into that.
Thank you.
Thank you. I was accused by a fellow board member being uncharacteristically grumpy when talking about central middle school. Part of my grumpiness was satisfied by the visit I had over at Central Middle School and the time I spent with the teachers and their enthusiasm. So I'm a little bit happier, but I still have to see some enthusiasm by the community. I know we have a community meeting here. We had about thirteen, fourteen people show up. A lot of those questions were not really on topic. I think I would be made happier. And I know we're under time constraints, but I don't know, the desire to make me happy. But the, I would certainly like to hear an enthusiastic room full of people telling us about what they feel about the Ed Specs and making sure they fully understand what they're commenting on. Because they were commenting on off-topic things when they were here. They didn't understand really what Ed Specs were. So if we can try to somehow fill a room as best we can, I'd be made a lot happier. So if we could.
I couldn't agree anymore. I mean, I'm a central middle school parent and I mentioned this to friends and people are like, okay, sounds good. So it, it's hard to rally people. And I mean, people are going to be at the Carver North tomorrow. Look, we can, we can interview them there, right? I mean, there's going to be a lot of central middle school parents there. I don't know.
Plug for the fundraiser for all three middle schools at Carver North tomorrow.
But I don't know, Tom, I know you're trying. You didn't even have a special note this week. I mean, I get sometimes the Friday notes and then I get notes in between. There was, you had a unique note on this. Did you get any feedback?
Uh, that went to Dr. Jones. I just was the messenger to make sure that that message got directly to as many people as possible. I also shared it with my, our feeder school principals. And I know they were sending it out at the elementary schools as well. Because obviously this building will affect more so kids that aren't in it yet than the ones that are. So we wanted to make sure we got it down to that group as well.
So at my PTAD last Friday, the topic came up about how we could get more input. Because while they like town halls, I think Kathleen was alluding to it. Parents are just so busy right now that they're finding it difficult to show up. And so they asked if I would push out a survey. So I did it that afternoon, put it in the Friday note. But over the weekend, I only had about fourteen people who had actually chimed in. So then on, I think it was Monday, I reached out to Tom and said, let's push it out again through the school level. And so at the beginning of the week, we pushed it out. It was, I think to about seventy or eighty. I'm hoping it continues. We'll push it out again. So we are really trying to get, and it's just an open comment box so that they don't have to click through a whole bunch of questions, you know, from us. They can just share what they think.
Did that go to middle school parents or did it go to elementary as well, the school level?
Yes, Tom actually pushed it out to his feeder elementaries and the middle school. I've gone to twice, for example. Yet I haven't, like most parents, I probably haven't responded. Maybe we should make it a homework assignment. Seriously, can we send it home with the kids and then the parents will look at it? Cody?
I don't mean to be pedantic, but the, just on that, this equity point, I always feel like if there's a way to say something that gets broad-based support versus being slightly controversial, it'd be worth considering. So I don't know. It's, with the processes, but to the extent that one word can be revisited because it is a little charged and a little political these days and it seems to, it seems like it doesn't have to be, given what Tom laid out as a vision. It's just something I would consider, especially for the document and, and also if it's not, you know, having a material impact on the construction or planning, I prefer to have something that's more inclusive. That's all, or less controversial.
Hey, anything else on CMS? Okay, we'll bring this up on agenda planning because this is, you know, we, we have to move quickly on this, yet we want to keep getting as much information as possible so that we can vote on this sometime in June. Yes, Ms. Costin?
Uh, one request has come to me about the survey. And if, um, because maybe the drafts have changed, maybe people could be able to submit more than one comment. So maybe people are anxious to do double homework on, on completing it.
Did I hear right? We, we obviously got a lot of really super public comments from students. Is the survey going to students as well? Any possibility of getting more student voice would be helpful.
No, Tom's on here, so I'm sure we can figure out a way to get their input.
Yeah. And I think to that point, we, we now have another new draft. So what I had sent in the second email was an actual link to the prior, I think it was the third version. So what we can, we can do is just add the fourth most updated version. And when I send it out, I can send it out again and copy, at least my middle school students for sure can be copied directly on it, the current central students.
When do we have to decide how the snack line lines up with the normal food line? It seems like there's some compelling research around that question.
There may be more during the A and E phase, but it's an excellent point.
I think it actually, I haven't looked at it, obviously since our comment earlier. We'll get the document and see, it can make like suggestions about flow, traffic flow.
I was very impressed by that analysis.
I also think we continue to talk about more than 20 minutes for lunch, which includes recess would be a wonderful idea, but that's a different topic. All right. Thank you. This will be back to us very soon. Okay. Special Ed Advisory Council update. I am so sorry. We're just getting started. Dr. H and the team.
Hi, you've been here a long time. The, I guess we can go to the first slide, the second slide, sorry. The CAC was formed in 2019 and was voted in by the Board of Education to provide advisory opinions regarding special education. We're here tonight to share those opinions. The CAC continued working as subcommittees on the following areas. The eligibility process, IEP 504 implementation, enrichment and nominating. Our subcommittees are made up of voting and non-voting members, including parents and GPS staff. The changes and improvements that the eligibility committee has seen this year are a clearing of evaluations by Dr. H that had long been backlogged. Dr. H has hired a bilingual evaluation team. And in the 2021 action plan, Dr. H reiterated that the eligibility process must be transparent, easily understood and collaborative. Dr. H is also committed to ensuring that the building assistant principals receive training and support regarding child find and eligibility. The six areas of focus the eligibility subcommittee identified were evaluations, consistency across schools regarding the eligibility process, lack of information and educational resources for parents on child find, communications with parents when their children are placed in MTSS, lack of uniform district-wide data collection management systems, and a lack of identification in behavioral mental health needs and interventions. Our recommendations from the six areas of focus, our recommendations are when students score in the bottom percentiles on standard, standardized assessments, they should be assessed or referred for eligibility testing. Reconsider how district and state assessments are being utilized to exclude students from MTS services when students score high and ignored when students score in the bottom percentile. We know Dr. H is releasing a new MTSS manual in the fall of 2022. We are recommending that the new manual be circulated to staff and parents and that GPS trained staff and parents on the new policies and procedures to ensure meaningful collaboration and best outcomes for our students. Involve all of the students' teachers in discussions regarding evaluations in order to have a holistic view of the child. And updated the handbook to clarify GPS staff in child find. Currently, the GPS handbook doesn't clearly identify that teachers have a legal obligation under child find. Any events such as scoring in the bottom percentile and an assessment under a parent outreach to staff should trigger a PPT meeting. And suspected disability language in the handbook is too vague. And the handbook should contain the same types of specific examples that teachers receive during their training sessions. And before I go, I know you guys are going to miss me, but before I go, I just wanted to say this. I really hope, this is in the report, but I really hope that it sticks here for families and for teachers and administrators. A lot of progress has been made, but there is still a significant amount of work to be done. Dr. H is spearheading a new special education rollout. And we would like to remind everyone of the tremendous shift this will require of teachers and administrators. It will be vital for teachers and administrators to learn how to meaningfully provide an appropriate identification and inclusive special education program that puts the needs of our children first. In education, sorry, that, sorry. I'm just going to repeat that. It will be vital for teachers and administrators to learn how to meaningfully provide an appropriate identification and inclusive special education program that puts needs of our children first in order to ensure that every child has the opportunity to reach their full potential. There must be big mindset shifts, belief system shifts and understanding of the role shifts. What we hope is that there is total transparency, grace and support for teachers and for families throughout this transition. To make this transition successful, we must ensure that teachers and parents have the support they need, perhaps without even having to ask for it. So it's been a pleasure. We welcome you, Dr. H. Sorry, I keep calling you Dr. H. And we look forward to many, many more years working alongside you.
There was one more recommendation for the eligibility committee. So it's to increase consistency with the evaluation reports. So some of the evaluations have summaries of what children needs and some don't have any recommendations. We were asking that they do list what they mean. So they'll be in layman's terms. So all parents can understand what the strengths and weaknesses and how they will be assessed and intervention will be provided for their children. So now we're on to the IEP 504 implementation subcommittee. So some of the changes that we're going to see are a new staffing model will be rolled out for the 2022, 23 school year. That will consider more data points from the previous model. As we saw in the PCG report in regards to our current staffing model, the PPS office operates with a lean staff to meetings objectives. Given this model, the PPS office is not currently structured to provide instructional support or best practices to our school. So it's a big achievement for us to have a new staffing model and that will start in the fall. Some other programs that are going to be starting are the new unique learner program, which I know has been presented to you and the two classrooms at Cosco School that they have also discussed during these meetings. Also, all the, the CERC training by the Connecticut State Department of Education to teach our staff how to drive legally defensible, defensible IEPs and how to facilitate meetings. So that has also been going on for the past year. The four, the IEP 504 implementation subcommittee identified four areas of focus. The first was effective and consistent facilitation of PPT and 504 meetings. The second was effective continuum of services. The third was staffing and specialization decisions. And the fourth was consistent awareness among staff of special education legalities. Some of the recommendations that the subcommittees came up with. And I think that Jen said this, but it's important to know that these subcommittees were made up of administrators, teachers and parents. And they were very actively engaged in working together to come up with all the recommendations in these reports. The first recommendation is to promote a greater quality and consistency of PPT and 504 meetings. Some suggestions were to have a central facilitator in each building that is proficient on how to run these meetings and has the proper training. Another suggestion was to provide additional training for all the assistant principals and the designated person in the buildings to run these meetings. The subcommittee was unanimous in its belief that students' own classroom teachers and special education teachers should become, should stay an integral part of these meetings. The second recommendation is to conduct routine audits of the current IEP and 504 plans to determine if the training you're currently providing are, are having a positive impact of the quality of these documents. And I think everyone discussed tonight, how do you need data? We want data to make sure that it's coming across in the 504s and the IEP plans. The second was to ensure that the new assistant principals receive appropriate supports such as training and coaching and reach defined baseline competencies prior to facilitating PPT meeting. So we don't want on the job training. We want the people who are facilitating meetings to have the training before they're facilitating them. It's very complicated PPT meetings and there's a lot of legality. So we definitely want that. The third is to consider additional tools to recruit, train and retain high-quality powers. Our most, our students with the highest need sometimes have powers with malder, at least at some parts of the day. So we really want extensive training for those powers. We believe that in our district, we used to have a power professional academy program. So maybe we can look into something. So it's a high quality of power training throughout the district. The fourth recommendation was notify teachers in advance if they were receiving a student who are, who requires specialized behavioral supports and provides efficient training so that teacher is ready to respond to those needs from day one. Self-explanatory. Five, allow those students who require greater continuity of support to work with an assigned power professional that will follow them as they advance grade level. Currently, those power professionals don't go along with the students. So if a student comes in at kindergarten, they could have a different power professional in first grade, a different one in second grade. If, even if they have built that strong trust, trusting relationship. So that's just something we'd like to be explored. Require all school to track the actual number of service hours provided to students. You know, with, you know, we hear social worker psychologists, some students, they receive their services on the IEP, but also they go to those providers throughout the day. We're asking that that be tracked. So the teachers' hours that they're providing to those students are actually tracked outside of the hours that they may be receiving. And then we have an accurate documentation of need of those students. The seventh and last is to document clear eligibility criteria and an exit plan from the wellness center to transition the student into the general student body. The wellness center is in the high school and it's our students with highest need. We would also like to increase the availability of transition counseling services within the wellness center and to assist with the transition to post-secondary education and to allow for adequate planning, scheduling and coordination of these services for the staff that are currently there. We have two more subcommittees that Caroline will. Okay. So we're going to discuss the enrichment subcommittee, much easier than on turn Jen's, because it's a fun subcommittee. We are able to put on workshops for the GPS community and for the entire Greenwich community. Next slide, please. We have, for the past two years, we've had a winter workshop and we've had a spring workshop. And our winter workshop was what is a 504 plan? And we had Dr. Heilig and Toller and we had Judith and Adele. Both run that workshop and we had parents from across the district learn the purpose of 504 plans, the difference between 504 plans and IEPs. We had a Q and A which led to great discussions between parents and staff. Next slide, please. And we will be holding our spring workshop. We encourage everyone to come. This is open to the entire Greenwich community. So please spread the word. Please come. It's with Dr. Lydia Suyfer. It's going to be a two-part series. So one will be held May 23rd, which is Monday. And then the second will be June 14th. They're two different, it's not the same one repeated, two different workshops. She's going to be talking about executive functioning. Executive functioning is all about self-control, emotional regulation, task initiation, organization, planning and time management and how that's vital for our students in the district. She's also going to be talking about working memory. And working memory, I think she describes it as a sticky note of your brain. It lets us work, work with info that we have and, and keep track of what we're doing. So May 23rd and June 14th, please spread the word. It's actually going to be in person, which is really exciting. It's going to be at the Greenwich Student Center or Greenwich High School Student Center. I hope I got that right. And finally, our final thoughts. So the CAC was formed to improve the educational experiences for current and future students, future special education students in the Greenwich public schools. The success of our special education program is dependent on how committed its stakeholders, including a board of education, are to its improvements. If our work this past year has taught us anything, it's that there is strong unwavering dedication from all of our stakeholders in persevering to provide more equitable access for our children with learning differences. We would like to thank Dr. Jones, Dr. Heilig and Toller, the administrators, teachers, service providers and parents who came to the table month after month to work together towards these goals. We would also like to thank the Board of Education for, for providing us with this platform to offer the advice and combined wisdom of all of our concerned partners. While we have significant strides to make, we have worked collaboratively, collaboratively and tirelessly to make improvements. We look forward to the continuing, to continuing this important work and carrying out our mission in the years to come. And I know we submitted a pretty lengthy report. We encourage you guys to read the full report because as Audrey said, you know, this is the work of various stakeholders throughout the district, community members and, and it has very valuable information. And if you have any questions, please feel free to reach out. Thank you. Questions?
Yeah, let me turn it over to Karen since you are on the committee, right? I thought it was Karen and Karen. You and Karen.
It was Karen.
It was Karen. Now it's Michael. So can I turn it to you to sort of?
So, 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 thank you. I think no one knows other than the leaders of CAC, the amount of hours that they put in. And I, and, but what I know is that they don't do it, you're, thank you from the Board of Education. They hear it because they do it because they want results. They, and what we, what you hear here tonight really is the product of three, four, five years of consistent dedication from, 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 from dedicating people. What I really appreciate with this year's report, in all honesty, is, is two things. One, which you heard mentioned was this cultural shift. Four years ago, you couldn't, you would, we would never have had a group of parents working with the board. Four years ago, you couldn't, you would, we would never have had a group of parents working with the board present concrete recommendations on here are our next steps. I think that is, that is marvelous. But also the, with that culture shift is, is the awareness spirit tonight and it's worth repeating that it really is the consistent effort of all stakeholders. We are still in the early days here of, 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 of shifting into a 21st century special education model. And it's really in the next year or two that it really is going to, where it's really going to be incumbent upon us partnering with general education and entire school community to really understand how this really supports everybody. The other thing though, that I really appreciate with this, with this report, that's worth, worth highlighting is the real concrete recommendations about how we can continue forward. Like I love the audit idea. They, I love that we're talking about qualitative data that assesses, you know, we've been talking a lot about quantitative tonight, but we're talking also about qualitative data about how we can see how things are going and really continue to move the needle. There's a lot here that I just got this week. The, we have to digest this. This is a great report and it's lengthy. So I look forward to more conversations, but, but thank you.
I just wanted to say, I thought this report was excellent and very helpful and informative and it shouldn't go without saying that it's groups of dedicated parents like yourselves and everyone else within that team that are constantly, I think, pushing the us as the board and pushing our educators to do better by our unique children who have, yes, learning differences. And it's through your constant voices that one, we were able to get the PCG to do their audit report. And I encourage you to keep pushing because that's how stuff gets done. And, you know, I was thinking, as I was listening to your report and obviously I read it a couple of, who originally got it. I was thinking, where else in this district can we put together teams of dedicated, energized parents like yourselves in different areas to focus on because things are getting done. What's clear from this report is we still have a ways to go. And so on that point, I, I want to say I appreciate your patience in, in, as it is a process and Dr. Stacy, because I can't pronounce her last name, is doing that job and it is, it is, it's going to take time. It's going to take time. And I think what you have realized as, you know, there is a team in place, it's, it's working hard. And we all saw the most recent email that you sent about the recent case, which is upsetting. But I do think we're, we're definitely making strides. And I think the audit proposal that you suggest is something we should consider because it shouldn't be a one and done. And now we're all fixed. I think that this is going to be something that needs to be evaluated over time and constantly to make sure, one, we're hitting our marks and two, we're not slipping. And three, we continue to strive to exceed our expectations. And that only comes from a constant process of review. And if we don't have a constant process of review, then it falls short. And then all of the hard work that you ladies have done as well as I'm sure there's none on the team too, but all of you that have done will fall away. Sorry. There's more, sorry.
Coincidentally, our new community member is a man too, so.
Perfect. But I, again, I just want to say and extend my words of, I thought this report was great. And the work that you have all done is just outstanding. Thank you for your help.
Yeah, you guys are the best. Thank you.
Christina?
I just want to thank you for your, what looks like to be countless hours of effort and dedication. And I know it's something that's a passion because of your, you know, what you care about deeply, but it comes across your effort and your energy. And I want to thank you for doing that. And I'm so pleased because I remember when the seat was discussed initially. And I'm, I'm moving in a more collaborative direction, a more positive direction. Like you said, there's still ways to go, but moving on a better trajectory. And along those lines, I don't know if you want to share any goals you have for next year for your committee. Just kind of your thoughts.
I think what's important is, you know, that it's a very ambitious action plan. And so keeping track, you know, and of, you know, what we're doing, what's working, what's not working with it. We have two huge rollouts of the unique learner program and the co-teaching program. We've never seen any, any type of programming like that in Greenwich. And, and we have to make sure that it's, you know, it's, it's rolled out very thoughtfully and, and that we're doing it, doing it justice. So I think those are, those are big areas to focus on. And.
Yeah, and I hope that we have just as many pages of achievements as we do, we have more achievements than we do recommendations. And that's what we're gonna.
Ms. Costin.
And maybe more of a question for Dr. Stacy, but I, you know, we, I've read multiple times in the report about staffing and I, you know, I know it's really hard right now to keep a building staff. You know, we've lost paras at our, at our school. I know. I just wonder how, how hard it is right now to find the help we need to support the students.
So there's definitely a shortage in the state. However, we have been really lucky to be able to recruit really high quality teachers. And we've been doing the interview process and to hire for next year. And the quality of people who are applying, we have multiple qualified candidates. So Greenwich is attracting the, the staff that we need. I think the most difficult with staff is when they leave mid-year or there's a short term, let's say a six to eight week leave. Those are very hard to fill because our highly qualified teachers have year long jobs. So that's kind of the struggle in, in trying to fill that. We've been lucky to work with some contractors who have been excellent, who have been able to fill some of those roles. But that's where the challenge is. Overall, we've been lucky to fill our regular positions with really highly qualified people.
Thank you. Well, I'd be remiss not to say thank you as well, but I was on the board when this was a much different relationship. And so I just have to say, this is, and I know, I know Joe, you've spoken to this as well. It's, there's, we can't say enough about how the cultural shift. And it's you guys, it's Dr. H, it's Dr. Jones, it's this board, but I really think it's more of you guys and Dr. H and Dr. Jones. So thank you so much for what you're doing and let's keep on rocking. Thank you.
And I just want to say thank you to the CF committee. They are great partners to work with and we've been able to really do some great work this year. So thank you.
Action items, French textbook approval, Dr. Caravella.
Well, good evening and I'm very happy that the showy sourey was exited from the building. It's one of a French word for bat. I don't know if I pronounced it correctly, but I did look it up. So we're hoping that you will approve our textbook purchase for next year for our new textbook series. At a cost of approximately $44,000.
Let me get the motion on the table. I need to make a motion to approve the French textbook as presented. Can I get a second? Oh my gosh, Cody is my second. Discussion. Okay, I'm just going to say these are so needed. I know I said last time that I have a French student and I cannot learn without a textbook. So thank you so much. We need these. Ready? All in favor? That passes seven zero. Thank you very much, Dr. Caravella.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay, next, healthy food center certification. Dr. Caravella, Mr. Nenaro. Anyone want to put this on the table?
So I, I would like you to do the recommended motion so that we can continue our healthy food certification. We have to do this yearly. And I would need you to read the motion as it is written on your agenda document cover sheet. There are two amendment, two motions. So if you could read those and vote on them so that we can continue with our healthy food certification, we would appreciate it greatly.
This whole thing?
The whole thing, number one and number two.
Well, I have to get on the table. So, okay, yes, let me hear. I'll get, okay. Recommended motion to authorize the superintendent to take affirmative action to implement the healthy food option and combines food and beverage exemptions. Okay, sorry. Number one, motion language for healthy food option. Pursuant to CGS section 10 dash 21 5F, the Board of Education or governing authority certifies that all food items offered for sale to students in schools under jurisdiction and not exempted from the Connecticut nutrition standards published by the Connecticut State Department of Education will comply with the Connecticut nutrition standards during the period of July 1, 2022 through June 30, 2023. This certification shall include all food offered for sale to students separately from reimbursable meals at all times and from all sources, including but not limited to school stores, vending machines, school cafeterias, culinary programs and any fundraising activities on school premises sponsored by the school or non-school organization and groups. Two, motion language for combined food and beverage exemptions. The Board of Education or governing authority will allow the sale of students of food items that do not meet the Connecticut nutrition standards and beverages. It's not listed in section 10 dash 221Q of the Connecticut general statutes, provide the following conditions on that. One, the sales in connection with an event occurring after the end of the regular school day or on the weekend. Two, the sales at the location of the event. And three, the food and beverage items are not sold from a vending machine or school store. An event is an occurrence that involves more than just a regularly scheduled practice, meeting or extracurricular activity. For example, soccer games, school plays, and interest class debate are events that soccer practices, college, I think, play rehearsals and debate team meetings are not. The regular school day is the period from midnight before to 30 minutes after the end of the official school day. Location means where the event is held and must be the same place as the food and beverage sales. Can I get a second?
Second.
And the reason. But now, I'll second them both. Okay, you're seconding them both. Do you see how fast it can read? I finally benefited our, my New York speech. Okay, discussion. Michael Joseph.
I can't hear what he said.
Can you explain what we're doing here?
Yes, we are, we are having a certification that we will serve healthy foods for the entire year. We will not sell anything that is not on the list by Connecticut nutrition standards. We did this for all year this year. And what it entails is it does give us some additional reimbursements for the high school meals. It gives us 10 cents per meal for reimbursement. So that's why we would like to do it again this year, this coming year.
Ms. Downey.
So it's basically a requirement if you participate in the national school lunch program that you have to pass the certification or Connecticut.
Correct. You are correct.
Do people ever complain about the food? Is this like a controversial thing or?
This has, doesn't have anything to do with the preparation of the food. The food because of COVID has been not up to par. But the cafeteria and the serveri at the high school is starting to go back to what we had before with homemade muffins, homemade pizza, soups, different types of salad bowls, ACI bowls. And it is going to be really good next year. So we can start the year off with the appropriate changes to our recipes and to the food that we serve at the high school.
Just out of curiosity, what's the most like, what's like an example of something that isn't allowed under this?
Candy bars. Soda, things like that.
You should take two votes. Okay. So on motion one, all in favor. That's a seven zero. On motion two, all in favor. That's a seven zero. That would have been really funny if somehow that changed. Okay. All right. Thank you very much, Dr. Caravella. Next up.
Thank you.
Calendar adjustment, 2022, 2022 school year. Dr. Jones. This is a very easy adjustment. After a discussion in the region, several school districts, including us, did not account for the federal holiday for January 1st, which is going to be held on the 2nd as a federal holiday. So we've adjusted the calendar for that. And we didn't have to take a day off for that end because as Linda was, Valentine was recounting, there was an additional day that was pointed out in April. So it's an easy offset. It basically is just putting the federal holiday on January 2nd. Ms. Downey.
I'm just a question to me because we have, so basically in this calendar that has us ending whatever day it's got, I mean, it's a 180-day calendar, but so snow day is, is just addressed in, on the June notes, correct?
Yes, we always build in five snow days, but 180 days is what's required.
Thank you.
I can only ask this question, but given the fact that we went, are going so late this year, has the last week of school been addressed in terms of the fact that people are leaving earlier at the high school? I know I'm switching categories, but it's just making me think about calendar. I'm sorry. From my understanding from Principal Mayo, that it really, it wasn't a change of process at all. This happens every year. We're just expecting going so late that we may have more people alerting the high school that they may be leaving earlier. But then we're doing finals one. They addressed finals. It's actually that week before and tried to make sure that it fell in a, in a more of a normal timeframe. Go ahead, Michael Joseph.
Well, one of the subjects to clarify is we've heard about parent, about a second round of parent teacher conferences a couple of times. That's a contractual thing, correct?
It is. And that really has risen from some work that some of our Title I schools have done. And the consultant actually that's in ARP for family and community engagement has worked with this buildings and they actually moved to two parent conferences. It's been very successful in elementary, but the teachers had buy-in to do that. So they had to adjust their schedules. And we fully believe in the value of that as well, that we do have to figure out because it either, you've got more early releases in order for them to have time to conference, which impacts the calendar. Or it has to be part of our bargaining with GEA, you know, when we come to the table to see if we can build that in somehow. All right, I didn't put this much in. Welcome. We approve the 2022, 2023 school calendar as revised. Ms. Costin is the second. All in favor? That passes seven zero. Thank you. Okay, we do have the financial report and, and our grant presentation. Having said that, I think we did send Sean home because he was quite sick. I'm going to put this on the table. We really don't, we, we've sort of done the, our part. And technically you actually don't need to vote on this. This is purely an update. You just have done that historically. We can continue to do that, I think, or we can do that, but I think that doesn't really matter. So can someone put the motion on the table?
You want the motion to just accept it? So.
Happy to second that. All in favor? That's a six. All opposed. One. Okay. That's a six one. Thank you. All right. Now onto agenda planning, which. Maybe you could email to him because he's gone. Okay, thank you. So on to agenda planning. We have two meetings left technically, but I think we need to add one, sorry. So the priorities that I think we're missing is obviously a vote for the art funding. And then CMS EdSpecs. But I think we could put the CMS EdSpecs into like a regular business meeting. Yes, Ms. Downey.
I just need to see the CMS EdSpecs. I guess the question is, I have, is, is it worth us having another? You know, we did just get these this afternoon and I don't think any of this. You know, we did just get these this afternoon, and I don't think any of us really felt like we had an adequate opportunity to review them. So might it be worth, you know, we had a good productive Zoom conversation. If we did, I don't know if it makes sense to do a vote on ARP and a central middle school EdSpec as a discussion about, I'm just throwing it out, just in terms of minimizing the number of extra meetings.
And maybe do it via Zoom is what you're suggesting?
That would be exactly what I'm suggesting. Just a food for thought that if there were an opportunity, let's say, next week to both vote on ARP and have just a discussion to flesh out any additional issues on the central EdSpecs. Just because then, again, we have to give the consultants time to revise it after we have a discussion and then to put us in a position, I think, to be able to vote on the EdSpecs. In June, I don't know exactly when in June, and I'm gonna make the June 2nd meeting or the June 16th and how that plays in with the RTM vote on the Building Committee. We have to figure the logistics of that part out, but.
Yeah, as you point out in the past, that EdSpecs are separate from the Building Committee, the RTM doesn't need to see that, right?
I think theoretically, we are supposed to have EdSpecs to present to the Building Committee. The question whether we have to do that before the Building Committee is formed or not. I don't know the answer to that.
It would kind of, I know for example, processes forming a building committee as we speak, right?
But the building committee doesn't get ratified until the RTM votes on it, so.
Go ahead.
And the RTM would vote in the Building Committee in June?
They are scheduled to.
They have to so that we can actually.
Because otherwise, they won't use the summer.
Oh, and the call is tomorrow. Very good point.
No, but I think, I think they've been given placeholders with, was my understanding.
So, I just wish there was a way that we could somehow get more of the CMS parents and North Street and Costa and Procret parents to buy into this.
Yeah.
I know Karen, you sent an email. I know to the PTA. Just trying to, you know, have some any other, other thoughts, ideas?
I think if we want to draw a lot of attention to it, we should just talk about the bathrooms.
How do you work?
Okay.
You can write a letter to the editor and be like, I invite all parents to comment on this. And just put a link, put a link to it, and then if no one responds to that, then honestly, what else can we do?
And I think you talk about it tomorrow night at Copper Nora. Okay, number one.
I expect all of you to attend.
Right. Um.
I'm in Panama.
I'm actually going to a Greek family party, so I can't make it. Um, but I know, because, I know, because I, you wanted me to come back for my course on sugar on the encore. I understand.
That's right.
But we're losing it. So, um, I think that, look, we can, I mean, Cody's right, we can only we can just try, right? We can't do any more than that. We need to keep, we need to move forward. We need to get the CMS EdSpec approved. Okay, and Dr. Jones tells me we've had more input than we've ever had in EdSpec. So there you go. Um.
Maybe with the bats and the crumbling things, they just don't care. They just want something new.
Perhaps, perhaps.
And we do think we, we have that FAQ somewhere. So I think that would help inform if we didn't meet next week, that would inform that conversation.
Okay, so I think next week, we'll continuously see on that EdSpec discussion, there'll be more feedback, there will be revised. Like you said, sorry, the Google document will be shared, and then we'll vote on ARP. So looking at your calendars, and let's do it via Zoom for next week. I mean, we've generally made Thursday a rule, but this is a place to start. But did anyone have a different opinion?
Into Thursday.
Any other ideas?
Saturday night.
The 25th is, I can't. 24th is CMS chorus.
We were doing it in the morning.
No, Michael Joseph, you probably can't, right?
Could you do a later afternoon? If you have a chorus concert, could you do like a five o'clock, four o'clock or five o'clock? I mean, maybe that's the solution. Look if there's concerts and events. Do it from your car. They can't.
Yeah. So is the 24th on the table?
As long as it's not when the Central Middle School Chorus is performing, absolutely. Which is at 7:00 PM. Yeah, or central. Really? Possibly I have wrong information. This is not the big concert, so it's okay. Yeah, because the really big concert was like two weeks ago. It's fine. That's fine. We can make it happen.
Let me put.
The, we can do it during the Central Middle School Chorus, ironically, concert.
We could do intuitive four o'clock that day, then it doesn't interfere with the concert.
Yeah.
Or five.
Sorry, on the 24th is what we're looking at. Does that work?
These are, correct?
Yeah.
Everyone else? Okay, so May 24th, 4:00 PM. ARPA vote and CMS EdSpecs. Okay. All right, and if you have anything else, let me know. But then we'll obviously have a board retreat and then, which year?
Answers to the questions that were before that.
Yes, we'll have the answers to the questions before then, right?
Yes.
Yeah, apparently. We apparently, they had already sent them, so we'll have them. And so if you have follow up more, you can send them now as well.
When, when is the, when is the racial imbalance back at the state?
June 1st, and Karen and I are joining Dr. Jones. And we are working on a presentation that we'll be sure to send around to the board.
And also for doing agenda planning, I think it is probable that we're gonna have some first read of some policies for the June 16th meeting. We're working on some things that we need to do for the next school year.
And then we want to vote on it until September?
That's okay. Oh, I mean, we'll have the agenda plan that'll, actually, we well, I don't think we'll have that for next Tuesday. That would be for June 2nd. A first read of the agenda plan for next year, yes, as well. If we do the agenda plan on June 2nd, we can either first read it on June 2nd and then vote on June 16th? We're fine? And again, as we all see, we move our agenda around a lot anyway. It's a starting point.
And the, the current board goals and self-evaluation conversation on June 2nd. In my head, the, if this committee, if we can get there, but I think we are talking about the Jones. My assumption was that could be a little bit, that could be more a little bit about the strategic plan and grassroots goals.
Great.
Since we don't really have current goals.
Right.
Joe?
Joe standing.
Don't you have a motion?
Motion to adjourn. I need it already.
Second? Okay, all in favor? That passes seven zero. Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for staying.